Good afternoon, it's five o'clock. Want to extend a welcome to everybody for joining us today. On our school board meeting and we're going to reconvene after coming out of closed session. And if everybody would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and if you will please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and Madam Clerk, if you will please call roll.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes, thank you very much.
Senator Rep. Allison.
Here.
Sorry about that. All right, and now I will entertain a motion for approval of our proposed agenda.
I so move.
Any, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Now we will have our first opportunity for comments from the community. As a reminder, if you will please limit your comments to three minutes, state your name and your address. Don't know if we want to go ahead, Ms. Taylor, if you approach the podium and then we'll check in and see if we have our Zoom.
Good evening. Jessica Taylor, 1016 Hayrick. So once again, my name is Jessica Taylor and I'm a reading specialist at Clark Elementary. And the president of the Charlottesville Education Association. I want to thank Ms. Torres, Ms. Dooley, and Dr. Gurley for meeting with Ms. Gilliken and myself yesterday to go through the most recent iteration of the collective bargaining resolution we proposed for adoption by the school board. I will keep my comments short with the intent that the brevity of my statement speaks to the significance behind their meaning. The members of the CEA first understand the board's desire to be cautious as we move into this new agreement. This is something that neither party has done before and we want to do so, both being well-informed and educated participants. That being said, CEA members do not want to bargain for a contract that limits in perpetuity the number of topics to be bargained. We want a resolution passed that moves us towards full bargaining rights. Second, we are adamant that administrative technicians are included in a bargaining unit. While it is included in their job descriptions that they are privy to confidential information, we are confident that we can develop language that will be amenable to both the board and CEA members that will allow them to participate. We look forward to scheduling another meeting prior to the winter break to review the next round of revisions to the resolution. The rally on the downtown mall where we first spoke publicly about bargaining was in December of 2021. The CEA was able to get authorization cards signed from over seventy-three percent of CCS staff in favor of collective bargaining in March of 2022. And we presented this board with our first resolution a month later on my birthday, April fourteenth. It has been almost a year now. It is imperative to your employees that we, the board and the CEA, continue to work collaboratively and move forward as responsibly, but as expeditiously as possible to get this resolution passed for the good of the employees and students of CCS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kama, I believe we had someone signed up. Online, if they're there.
I do see that person, I just need for them, if they want to raise their hand or I can promote them and let them come on. Usually they will raise their hand to speak at this time. So I'll promote that person since they were part of our preview and they are able to unmute if they want to provide comment at this time. Otherwise, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. So we have Maya Buell, I believe, if you're there and if you would like to provide public comment. We do have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for public comment. Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else here in the media center who would like to please? Feel free to approach the podium, please state your name and your address and remember to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Dr. Emily Yen. I am a Charlottesville resident. I live at 506 Ridge Street in Charlottesville, and I wanted to speak in support of a full scope of collective bargaining. I think that this is a really important issue, there are a number of important issues. And especially if we were trying to build collaborative relationships, there are so many win-win opportunities, especially around non-economic issues that can be addressed through collective bargaining, especially issues that affect minority staff. And by limiting the scope of bargaining to just two issues in perpetuity, many of these issues will not get addressed, and I think that that is just a huge missed opportunity. So I really would advocate for a full scope of collective bargaining in this resolution. I would also strongly support including secretaries in the bargaining unit. While they do sometimes handle sensitive information due to the nature of their jobs, they don't actually have authority to make high-level financial decisions. So by including them in the bargaining unit, which many of them are underpaid and have limited job autonomy, I think that that would be a, it would be very logical to do so and would follow the precedent of most school districts in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make comment? All right, great, thank you. And remember, we do have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. And we will now move on to adoption, or I will entertain a motion for adoption of our consent agenda, please.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now items for discussion.
We will start with you with the history standard statement.
Thank you for this opportunity. We felt like it was important if everybody is paying attention to what is going on at the state level. We, as a board, would like to present this to the Virginia State Board of Education. And if you'll entertain me, I will read through it, or most of it. So we, the members of Charlottesville School Board, are writing to request that the State Board of Education return to its usual process of consideration and approval of the state's K-12 history standards as developed and recommended in August 2022 by history educators, professors, historians, parents, and others. We strongly encourage the VDOE to stay the course on its longstanding commitment to developing a more inclusive and honest curriculum. Throughout 2020, the year 2020 to 2022, our Commonwealth trusted a committee of history educators, historians, museum professionals, parents, and community groups to conduct the scheduled seven-year revision of our state history standards. Over the course of those two years, in a very public fashion, this committee made thoughtful and informed decisions. In addition, this work built upon the efforts and recommendations of Virginia's 2020 African-American History Education Commission. We would like the State Board of Education to follow its usual procedures to consider and then adopt these standards. By contrast, the surprise alternate standards announced by the Youngkin administration on a Friday night in November were hastily developed by a consultant without public input and without the participation of the VDOE subject area experts. This led to a number of ill-informed recommendations, such as omitting African-American history to such a degree that not even Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was included in the original version. The idea that Virginia's indigenous tribes and communities would be portrayed as immigrants is also inaccurate and offensive. Units of study about ancient China and Mali were both removed from the K-5 curriculum. These errors and omissions underscore the haste of the process, the lack of public review, and the political motivation to prioritize white European perspectives. After the Board of Education correctly rejected these November standards, there is now a consideration of merging the August and November standards. But a quick mashup of the two sets will not lead to a thoughtful or cohesive curriculum. The governor has stated that his goal is to teach our history, the good and bad. As parents, teachers, and students have recently shared in public comment, Virginians agree that our students should be learning whole truth history that explores multiple perspectives and experiences. The best way to do that is to consider and adopt the original August recommendations and to follow the VDOE's own time-honored approval processes. This past spring in Charlottesville, a group of fourth-grade students at Clark Elementary explored our own school's desegregation story and then wrote letters to members of the Charlottesville 12, those black students who bravely integrated all the white schools in 1959. As part of the students' letters, one common theme emerged. It was hard to learn this history, but I am glad we did it. Please take the steps to assure that Virginia's students continue to have access to a curriculum that is challenging but rewarding, one that builds understanding, empathy, and a sense of connectedness to the people of our past, present, and future. So we look forward to sending that letter on and for that to be on record that that is how we in Charlottesville City Schools feel. All right.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have capital improvement projects. That will be Mr. Mike Goddard.
Good evening, school board. Can you hear me all right? All right. Happy to come for the, I think this is the fifth time to present our yearly projects to you all. We, we have gone through a tumultuous year, but we have managed to get a fair bit of good work done this year and a lot more to come, so. I will start off with a brief conversation about the CIP process and how we go about deciding what projects get funded. And I think that's just a good, a good overall thing to go over every time we have this conversation. Because we get a lot of questions about that. So there are basically two processes for how we decide these things. There's the CIP process, and that's usually what we would use for larger projects that are funded as line items approved by city council. So we do facility condition assessments. That's something we do on a five-year cycle. Every school building and every city building is assessed to find deficiencies, needed repairs, and we do needs assessments, which basically that can be a request from the school, from school board, whomever has the need. And then facilities development staff will prioritize those needs to the best of our ability. The CIP committee will review those prioritizations, make sure that we're headed in the right direction. And then the city CIP and planning commission will decide what gets funded or suggest what would get funded, and then the city manager and city council approves or doesn't. And then we have a separate lump sum process, so both, so the city schools have two sources of funding that we manage, small cap and large cap, and they both use a fairly similar process. Those lump sums are kind of divided up into smaller projects and we don't have to go directly to council for approval for each of those. The way we decide that is, again, the facility condition assessments. We do yearly interviews with all of the school principals, take their input and their needs. Maintenance requests are considered and also administration and board requests. And we kind of pull those all together and divide up our small cap funds accordingly. It's, it's a little bit of a complicated process because we don't have the manpower that we would love to have to get everything done, but we do our level best. So I'll go into some of the things we've done this year. Here's a list of what I'll show and I'll just get right into it. First of all, we finished up the Burnley Moran modernization. We've got a couple of small items outstanding on that, but for the most part, this one's complete. Basically, this was a modernization of the media center at Burnley Moran. We also redid the Makerspace STEM Lab within the library. And this was a $1.25 million renovation. We worked with VMDO Architects to design this, and this is part of our modernization program. So we have done, I think, four schools now and three left to do of the elementaries. And then the program will move on to pending any changes, Walker, where we're going to do some work there to prepare for the pre-K. So some more views of that space, and there's our Makerspace, which, as you can see, has been fully occupied and is in use. I wanted to mention this project because I think it's an example of how sometimes emergencies come up and we try and respond to those as best we can. This was not a large project, but it came kind of out of the blue. It came to our attention that at Walker Upper, there was a need for two storage closets to be turned into a classroom for ADA purposes or for sped purposes. And there was an ADA issue with the students who were using another classroom, having to travel all the way across campus. And it really wasn't the best situation, but we didn't have a lot of time to pull it together. But we responded pretty quickly and for about $20,000, we managed to make another small classroom to take care of the need. So this is an example of one of our small cap projects that we do as a quick reaction. Here at CHS, we did some masonry repairs. These are the kind of projects that you don't get a lot of pats on the back for, but they do help the building stand up. There was a lot of cracked masonry back in the small gym of this building, some more up in the loft in the Martin Luther King Performing Arts Center that had been caused by an earthquake back a few years, the one out in Mineral. It, it wasn't anything that was going to cause a failure. We'd been tracking those cracks for a while, but we went ahead and repointed those, added some control joints here and on the exterior of the small gym so that the cracking that had been happening in that brick would stop. And we also did some replacement of concrete walkways on the outdoor areas between classrooms. So that was about a $100,000 project. We also did the Clark Building envelope renovation this year. These are the sorts of projects, again, that people might not even notice if they didn't see it happening, but we repointed all the brick on Clark Elementary and repaired. If you look at the, that little roof in the foreground of that picture, it goes over a walkway between the addition and the original building. And that was leaking back into a wall and nobody knew where the water was coming from for a long time. It was causing some, some rot issues inside the school. So we identified the problem there and solved that while we were on the site. Again, a bunch of window caulking and sealants and things that aren't very exciting, but keep your school tight and keep the water out. And that was a $300,000 project. And then we are headed into the Greenbrier modernization. So this one, we, this is another of our $1.25 million modernization projects. And we bid this last summer and got no bids, which is unusual. It was a very difficult contractor season last summer. So we're going to go ahead and complete the construction part of the project this coming summer. But we did manage to get the, the classroom furniture delivered last summer. So all-new classroom furniture is in the school. And we did pre-bid for the rebid of that project for next summer. Got very good response from our contractor, so we're feeling pretty confident that we're going to be able to get a team together to pull this off next summer. And here's that new furniture. We also did a full siding replacement for the gym building at Lugo McGinnis as well as building envelope project for the rest of the school. This was a $50,000 project, not a big deal, but that school was in imminent danger of, of damage because of the siding that had rotted on it. I think someone had specked the material that was not appropriate as a siding and it was rotting off pretty quickly. Water was coming in through the windows, all that kind of thing. So we went ahead and replaced that, sealed up the buildings, and those are complete at this point. And that's what it looks like now that it's completed. We put a new roof on K-Tech this past summer. This is a 60-mil EPDM roof, a new poly-isoe insulation, which means it'll be a little more energy efficient into the future. Nobody cares about a roof until it doesn't work, but there it is, $1.13 million. And here's a big one that we, you might have heard about, the middle school reconfiguration, which we are working on. We think it's about a $70 million project. We'll see when we bid it in the spring. We are at 65% on our construction drawings right now, working with VMDO Architects. Everything is moving ahead smoothly so far. And I think the team is working very hard. You might have heard asks for different bits of information. We've had contractors and architects crawling all over the existing Beaufort campus trying to get every bit of information they can. So this is a really exciting project. Again, I think we're going to bid it in the spring of this coming year and get underway in the summer. And it will be quite an impressive uplift for Beaufort. It will not be without its complications, of course, because this is a phased construction project. We're going to build an addition and then we're going to renovate the existing A building of Beaufort. There's going to be a demolition phase and the school's going to be occupied throughout. So we have a great team of architects that we're working with who are putting a lot of thought into how we can pull this off without any, well, with minimal interruptions. Can't say none because that's not possible. But we're confident we can deliver a really great new academic environment for you there. And we are hopeful that we do not see the kind of escalation in the construction market that we're seeing everywhere else and that we can make this happen without having to cut too many things that we care about from this program. There's a view from kind of the field up towards the new buildings that we'll be adding. You'll notice that the gym building that is there now is demolished in this view and replaced with a brand-new classroom building and gymnasium to the right there and a bus loop that goes behind the school as opposed to in front. So I'll give you a quick overview of what we're planning for next year, just so you have a sense of what to expect. The middle school reconfiguration that I was just talking about, we'll go into construction. CHS roof, Phase One, will begin this coming summer. So the roof of this building is quite large, you might have noticed. And due to material availability, it's not really possible to do it all in one summer. Also worker availability, it's really hard to do a roof this big that fast. But we are breaking it up into a three-phase project. So Phase One will begin this coming summer, followed by Phase Two and Phase Three. And this has been submitted to city council as a CIP request. We will do some flooring remediation at Greenbrier to replace some asbestos flooring there that needs to be replaced. We're going to do a little bit of work on the CCS administration building to make that more ADA accessible and to give them a little bit of security improvement there as that building is not the most secure. It's going to be a fairly modest improvement, but a needed one all the same. We're going to replace some windows at Clark. So when we went to do our building envelope project there, we noticed that a lot of the window sashes there are literally coming apart. So we're going to have to replace pretty much all of those, we believe. And that's kind of an expensive project, but you don't want window sashes falling out of windows on the people's heads below. We are planning on doing the Walker Building envelope restoration to prepare that building for its future role. as a pre K. And that's just to keep the building tight, make sure that it doesn't degrade while we're working on all these other big things that we're working on. And then we are working on a C H S electrical project. I didn't mention it because it's not something that has a lot of great photos to go along with it, but we did Phase One of our electrical project here this summer. C H S had a bunch of old electrical panels that were of a variety that tends to cause fire danger. And it had been a concern for quite a while. So we phased one of the replacement of those this summer, going into Phase Two next summer and Phase Three the year after. And then we will do a myriad small, small cap projects as well. Anybody have any questions about what I have presented?
Mike, as usual, thank you so much for your great work on this in our C I P stuff. And we're very fortunate to have Mike on our team. And hopefully you'll get some more people on your team.
I think we're working on that.
Yes, so hopefully I'll get some more people on your team. But I really do appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a small question. If you could just briefly explain the Walker Building envelope restoration.
Sure. So this is the sort of project that we do in all of our buildings. And basically, any any building, over time, exterior sealants, brick mortar, steelwork tends to break down, crumble, flashing. And that lets water inside of the envelope of the building and causes degradation of all the interior parts. And things just start to snowball from there. So that's just a it's a fairly routine project that we do on all of our buildings on a cyclical basis. And Walker is probably the most in need of our buildings right now. It's got, not to get too in the weeds, but a lot of our school buildings have a lot of exposed steel members, which was kind of a design choice right around the mid 60s when a lot of these schools were built. And those have a tendency where they meet the ground to get chemicals for snow removal, which causes the steel to rust, which causes more serious problems than you would expect. So it can become structural if you don't take care of it. So that's that's the basic idea.
I just wanted to add and repeat, I appreciate your work and the presentation. And it's rare that we have a presentation where it's like feel good and things are getting fixed. So thank you. I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
That's why we come, so that you have that sense of, yeah, we're doing something over here. Yeah, yeah, we all do.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Bird, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you all. We appreciate it as well.
All right, we will now have Dr. Baptist. She will go over our school naming committee recommendations.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. I think Mike's taller than I am. Since I was with you in October to give you the process that we're going to follow, quite a few things have happened and I wanted to share those with you. When I was here before, we already had the survey open for looking at Clark in Venable. That did remain open. We had over 500 responses to the survey and from a variety of constituents, if you will. At least 35% of that was community members. So we were very pleased to have large numbers to respond to that. We then had a meeting on October the 19th, which was a community forum that had different community members join us and to look at some of the survey results and to get more input from the community. Then on October the 25th, we did have another committee member where we looked at all of the information we had received to that point to see where we wanted to go from there. While there was lots of discussion about what maybe names should be, the one thing that was really prevalent, at least at 92% from all of the information we had, was that people thought the names of Clark and Venable needed to be changed. So while what could be changed to could differ, the overwhelming thought was that we did need to make some changes. But the committee did listen very carefully to all the groups and all of the information that we had and decided at that point that we would take it to a vote of the third and fourth graders at the schools. So all of that was planned. Dr. Allison Brown did a wonderful job with creating the video that children would have to know about the choices of the names. On the two voting dates, it was just like I voted in the last election. It was, we had the separate carols for the students. They had computers. When they finished, they were all given a I voted sticker, exactly like the one I got at the last election. So I think the students were very engaged in the process and it was very interesting for them. And they all wanted their stickers when they finished voting. So I didn't know you could order I voted stickers, but in case you need any, you can get them on Amazon. So we did do the first vote on November the 8th at Venable. And I think since that was two days after the the main election, that was still very exciting for everybody. And then we did the next one, November the 21st, the Monday before Thanksgiving. So the results from, well, before we get to that, we did talk about in our committee meetings very carefully. And I really want to thank publicly the people who've been serving on the committee because it's been a difficult task. It's an emotional task when we start talking about changing names of buildings that many people have known for years and years and years. And we even had a speaker at the October meeting that that talked about the will of what the names should be. The committee did listen to all of it and did decide that if we tried to maintain the names or any versions of the names that we had, it we did not want to continue the connection to names that would have problematic issues. So while some people preferred using the names of either Clark and or Venable in another form, we felt like if we did that, we would still be using names that had we had felt like had been an issue to begin with. So the committee very carefully looked at all of this to, again, make sure we're doing what we felt like was the right thing for the values of the school division and for our community. We also have talked about, because of where we are now with so many of our schools named for people, trying to look at any new naming that we do to keep it away from names of people, try to come up with other types of names that we would not have to go back and look at in a few years to say, do we need to change for whatever? So we are trying to not name any of our new naming for individuals to look at other possibilities. So what we did from the committee is we set a ballot. We determined names that we thought should be on the ballot. And at Venable, the two names that were decided were 14th Street, because it's on 14th Street, and Trail Blazers to honor the Trail Blazers from the Charlottesville 12. On the day of the vote, we had 67 votes from the third and fourth graders. And you can see the tally there. Trail Blazers Elementary had 32 votes with 14th Street only getting seven. We had lots of write-ins and which, again, is was interesting with the whole voting process that the the students knew about write-ins. So we did had write-ins. We had 23 write-ins. And as you can see, 17 of the write-ins were for Venable nine. And two of the write-ins were for All-Star. And I will tell you, all the others were just one name. Nobody had had more than two names from there. Some of the names were very interesting. I think we would get a lot of publicity if we named the school some of the names that were suggested in there. But anyway, this was the tally of the votes from Venable. Then on the 21st of November, we did the votes at Clark. We had 81 votes. Friendship Elementary received 33 votes. Summit Elementary received 28 votes. And we had write-ins there, but only one of the names got more than one vote, and that was Clark. I guess Clark was where we had some of the more interesting names, Bubble Gum and some other the names that we could have had, which I thought was pretty interesting, but wasn't sure that would be what the the board would be willing to approve. So this is the the selection that we had. And we came up with the names of Friendship and Summit within the committee to decide what should be on the ballot. Summit thinking about Summit and Mountains. Friendship, many people will say it's just because of Friendship Court. No, it's not. It's because of friendship and one of the attributes we want our students to have. And for people who thinking it is tied just to Friendship Court, we have heard that there's been a group in Charlottesville that's looking to change the name of Friendship Court and probably will do so within a year or so. I don't know what what it will be, but we are not trying to name it just for Friendship Court. We are looking, yes, that is a thought that is in the neighborhood. It is one of our main neighborhoods, but we're also looking at the concept of friendship. So the recommendation from the committee and have have worked with Dr. Gurley on this recommendation before it comes to you is to rename Venable Elementary as Trail Blazers Elementary and to rename Clark Elementary as Friendship Elementary. I would be glad to try to answer any questions you might have and realize this is not up for a vote this evening, that you would probably do this at the January meeting. And just to add to this before there are any questions, we will in January start with the next two schools that are on our list and plan to follow a very similar process. Those two schools will be Burnley Moran and Johnson. So we'll start with the survey early January, have a have a forum, have committee meetings, have a vote, and we'll hopefully be back to you in February with with the initial recommendation. So with that, any questions you might have?
Thank you. We'll start down here with Ms. Dooley. Do you have any questions? Okay. Dr. Kraft?
No, I'm I serve on the committee and I just want to thank Dr. Baptist for your leadership and for this is this is a difficult process and very emotional process for some people in some parts of the community. And, you know, I feel like the committee worked really well under your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Morse? Mr. Bryant?
I too serve on the committee and indeed it was a difficult process. But thank you, Dr. Baptist, for your strong leadership in getting us through this first round. Thank you so much.
It's a strong committee. I'm just scheduling the meetings.
Ms. Morse-Bird?
I just wanted to add really quickly that I like the idea of getting away from naming the schools after people and we don't have to revisit them. One of my favorite writers, James McBride, says to never get to know your heroes. You'll be disappointed every time. And so I I think that these are great options and I appreciate your work and the committee's work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McKeever?
Hi, thank you, Dr. Baptist and committee members. I because the vote was so close for Clark and really just had a significant amount of write-in votes. And I just wonder how you decided that Friendship over Summit?
Thank you for that question, and I should have mentioned this. It was very close and realizing that we had several extensions and more write-ins that could have changed it one way or the other. Dr. Gurley and I met yesterday and we did send out a survey to the committee members yesterday showing that as close as it was, was there a certain feeling one way or the other? And we didn't hear from everybody on the committee by this morning, but it was overwhelming over two to one to keep it with what the students had voted and keep it with Friendship.
Okay, so so you so you took a vote by email of the committee members and between Summit and Friendship, and a majority of them said, okay.
It was to whether we needed to go with the student vote because it was so close or did we need to to look at Summit as a possible option? And out of the number of people who voted, all but three said to keep it with what the students had voted. So that was the process that we had chosen and it was decided to follow the process that we had started.
Okay. I just I would like to put in my own vote for Summit just to because I think reaching new heights is a really beautiful thing for Clark as a as a future forward-thinking path. And as a parent who has a fourth grader who did vote in the Venable election, she loved it. Thank you so much. The process was really lovely. And I don't want to like take away the results of the vote, but I do think like maybe we should have ranked choice voting. I don't know. It just feels like with only five votes separating the two that there wasn't really and 15 write-in votes. I don't think that there's a clear consensus. And personally, if there was a more dominant like Trail Blazers versus 14th, like I feel like that was a pretty significant difference, even though my girl voted for a write-in. But anyway, I just I just personally don't see the the kind of, this is a big decision, you know? And I feel like Friendship, while lovely, kind of is a is a I would I would rather have Summit as like a value that we're reaching new heights, this school specifically. I think would really could we could really do something with that. So that's my two cents. I don't know if this is the appropriate place for that two cents, but I appreciate, you know, Dr. Baptist knows me enough to know that I really appreciate your work. And of course, if I don't have something to say about it, then was it really?
I understand your statements. And as I said, we did really deliberate on it in the overwhelming from the results we got back yesterday was to stay with what the students had said. And I get it that there weren't five extensions and 15, it's either 15 or 11 write-ins. And they were all singleton write-ins.
Ms. Bird, do you have any comments, questions?
Just thank you so much. I I really appreciate shying away from naming after individuals. And I definitely appreciate the integration of core values of the schools in their names.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Can I just say one other thing? I think, you know, like Ms. McKeever said, you know, probably personally myself, I like Summit too. And and I think, but the more important thing is, you know, whether we, if we decide upon a certain process, do we stick with that process and just sort of see it through? And I, you know, I was thinking that in this, with this choice, probably the word friendship is much more familiar to third and fourth graders than the word summit is in terms of understanding the full meaning and, you know, the aspirational aspect of it. And so that's probably part of what went into the voting there, which was different than the voting at Venable. And then, you know, so if the board would want us, that the committee to use a different process, I guess that would be feedback to the committee that we could take back.
I don't think I was saying anything about process. The process was great. There's just not a majority for one when there's many, many others that voted for something different. And I just want to be very clear, the process worked well. There's just five votes difference. And when you have so many votes who didn't vote for either one of them, you have to fall back on something else.
Dr. Brown did an excellent job in the video to try to explain the different meanings of Summit. But I don't know if they fully understood all of that.
So I'm curious if, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you kind of reconvened and got a sense from the committee this morning about what to do with this. But would it be altering the process too much to to bring it back to the students and limit it only to the two and not allow write-ins? If we truly want to honor student voices, and that's what we're going to follow. Just curious if you all talked about that.
I think what we heard throughout this process is that if we're going to make it a true democratic process, that having the option to write in, because initially we only had the two choices. And then we did, we listened to the feedback of our stakeholders, our students, and they wanted the ability to write in. And you see, I mean, in both instances, you know, you didn't have just like one or two write-ins. You had quite a bit of students to write in. So most certainly, I mean, we could do whatever is the pleasure of the board. But I I think what we heard from the what we heard from the committee is, you know, we put it out to the students. But I mean, again, this is a we put it out to the students, but I mean, again, this is a recommendation and I think as Ms. McKeever has said, you know, you see that the margin is very small. And as a board, you all have, you know, you get the final, make a recommendation and the recommend... We're presenting a recommendation, but you always have the ability to modify it if you feel strongly as a board. You know? Yes?
Well, I think it's important to note that the majority of voters prefer a name other than Friendship. If we count Summit plus write-ins, and so, the majority of students did not choose Friendship. The plurality did, the most did, but not, but not majority. And looking at Venable, the majority did, right? So, 32 versus 30. I mean, it's still quite close, but the top two, there is a much larger difference. And so, in thinking about process, you know, I would want maybe that to be a consideration about going with the name that not just the most wants, but that there is really a majority that does prefer that name.
Right. And so, we do have the ability to send it back and, I mean, this, what could be different this time versus the first time? This time could be about a runoff, if that's what you want to do. Like, so we could leave the recommendation for this first read here. It could go back and it could be this time just about running off between... So, there's, you're either going to pick one of the, you're going to pick one or the other.
It's hard, though. Like, would we be asking you to do this if we liked Friendship?
Right.
So, it does feel a little bit self-serving.
Right.
Yes. Well, and that's just the point. Like, we should just make the decision amongst this board. Like, we shouldn't ask Clark or Dr. Baptist or anybody to go back to the drawing board. They have given us a recommendation. We are free to take or leave this recommendation.
Absolutely.
Ms. Morseberry?
I was just going to say that I appreciate the process that the committee went through and I think we should let it stand. I mean, we can go with the runoff model, but we've been talking a lot about people staying the course with policies they create. We can change it for the next round of schools if we want to, that there's only this choice or that choice. But we spent the whole first part of the meeting talking about history standards and policies and the committee did a lot of hard work. And so, I'm willing to go with their recommendation. And the whole idea that it's five student difference, it was only the third and fourth graders. So, there's an argument to be made that second graders and first graders want. So, I think we have a policy in place and we could nitpick all we want to over it, but we've agreed to it. And so, I think we should just respect the committee's work. Also, if you're on a committee and you do the due diligence of creating this process, it's kind of like, I spent a lot of time on this for you to just override the results.
Thank you.
What results specifically? Like, that's the...
The result that they picked, that's the process they picked.
But a majority did not vote for the particular one that we want to forever name a school?
Nothing. But a majority of students didn't vote. The process is the one the committee came up with.
And now, we as a board get to decide.
Okay.
Anybody else like to add to this?
I think a case could be made for wanting, from the board perspective, for wanting to make sure that the choice, you know, is a true majority choice, that the community of Clark really are embracing the new name in a strong way. So, I do think a case could be made for that. And we're all new at this, you know? Committee is new at this and we're doing the best we can, but it doesn't mean that we can't tweak or add a step in the process.
I mean, I appreciate that, you know, that this is new. I hate to say, you know, take it back and revisit it, but I think it is important to do it right because this is a big change. And I'm sure that you all have worked hard and can learn things, you know, in the next round. So, I'm not sure what the will of the board or if we want to leave it up to the committee to decide what you want to do at this point.
I would just like to say that this is the first, so this is the first round of this and so, we most certainly must get it right this time. And I think what you all have asked us to do is to bring you all the most information, bring you all the data. And so, it, you know, taking it back, I don't know if that really, I don't know if that really changes how you feel versus we've brought you the information, the most information and we did do our last little bit of due diligence from the committee, but most certainly, you all have the ability to say as a school board, you know, we want to modify the recommendation. We're just making, we're just bringing the recommendation. You're the governing body and whatever we do this time sets the precedent. And so, you just want to make sure that, and I just want to make sure that I'm helping you all to get it right. So, we bring a recommendation and if that's not the recommendation and using some of the words here, if that's not the recommendation that we feel like as a community, we can live with forever and always, if you feel like you have enough information to modify that recommendation, then you have the ability to do that. But that's not for tonight.
I would like to ask the committee to, for this that's already happened, to go back and offer the two choices so that we can have a majority decision. And then, moving forward, if there is an instance in which a winner wins the most votes, but not the 50% plus one, that your process be changed or amended so that what's recommended to us is that.
And I would just like to add, if we do end up going back, I would make the recommendation that it's not just the third and the fourth graders. I would make the recommendation that not just the third and the fourth graders get to vote if we're going back out for a vote.
So, we did, so we did talk at length about that and we got parent, we had input from our parent members and that was not the pleasure of our, I mean, we had a parent on there that said, "My child's a little younger and I just know how that process may be." So, I don't know. Just providing you with that little piece of information. I don't know if we had agreed as a committee, well, if the committee, I'm just a non-voting member of the committee. I don't know if the committee would agree with that, but, I mean, we can take that, we can take that back to the committee.
Can you help me understand if the intent is for the students to have the final recommendation or the committee to have the final recommendation?
I think that changed during the process because when we were at the community forum, there were some poll questions in there that sort of led to the response was, should it be up to the committee or should it be up to something else? And then, when the committee met end of October, they decided then that's to do the vote and to have the students to have the answer.
Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think, I don't want, I just don't want to get in the weeds too much, but I appreciate the debate over this. Not sure if we're going to have too much of a difference if it goes back into our runoff and then it still comes back to us to have the discussion and going off our preferences at the same time. So, that's, that's just where I'm trying about, trying to think about this a little bit.
Yeah, I think I would support Ms. Dooley's recommendation and with the notion that we do this, we send it back one more time, but then we, the board abide by the vote that comes back to us this next time.
I think there's like a fundamental, like disparate disconnect here because I do not want 60 children to be the final arbiter of this. If we are, like honestly, the word friendship is a really haunted word in our community. And so, I have a very hard time with the idea that this is where this school is with that name. I am concerned. And I just feel like we're just opening a can of worms and we don't even need to. And while it is a lovely word and a great value, a great value, I personally do not like that name for our schools. And of course, a third, fourth grader, first, second grader, everybody, we all love the word. I just think that context matters, history matters and elected officials matter. And committees matter as well, but that's why we have to make the hard decisions as the elected body. Third and fourth graders can give us their input and we're very grateful for them. Again, I had a child vote for, in this process. This is not devaluing or minimizing that process. It is merely asking, is this the right among the grown-ups in the room who are elected, the right decision for our division for the rest of time? And I just think the word friendship is too haunted in our community and we need a more, for this school in this neighborhood, the word, there are better choices. And I don't think returning it to the committee and saying, oh, the school board is going to decide. Whatever they decide is going to work. I feel like that is handcuffing us in a way that is not okay for elected officials.
Ms. McKeever, can you explain a little bit to me of how friendship is haunting in the community? I'm not sure I'm understanding.
I think Dr. Baptist, you know, suggested with her, in her statement about how it might be negatively associated with Friendship Court.
I don't mean for it to be negatively associated with Friendship Court, that it might be associated with Friendship Court.
Might be, right. Whatever the connotations of that are. And that is why many times places change their names, right? I mean, we all know when it was Garrett, we now know it as Friendship Court. And there's, I personally think that it's really important just to be straightforward and honest about that. I think, I don't know what the connotations are, but I do worry about that as like, that school. And I just, I'm sick of Clark being that school. I want it to be the school where everybody wants to go. And I just feel like putting, giving it a tie to Friendship Court with whatever the connotations of that are, especially as it's changing. I just worry about that. And I might be wrong or naive about it, I don't know. But when we have other choices, I think we should consider them.
I will say that prior to the committee meeting, several people did research just of names of schools and came up with the list of names. Dr. Gurley, you may remember how many names were on the list. I don't. 20, 30, somewhere in that range. And the committee looked at all of these names and we talked about, you know, didn't talk about all of them, but talked about many of them. And what rose from that list from the committee was Friendship and Summit. Now, there was a lot of discussion about that, but, I mean, when you start thinking about names of schools, we could be here till tomorrow just thinking of possibilities of names. So, we did have, we had a list to get the conversation going. This is where the conversation went and the rest we've talked about.
Okay, there we go. Back to the first point I made a long time ago is that it seems like we can just stick with what the committee is recommending and not sending it back because it's not necessarily, I mean, it's the five votes, but it's also the name. So, it just seems like it's a board decision to make because if it comes back as friendship, it's not, it's going to be in the same spot. So, I think that we just move forward. I...
We start going down negative roads forwards? I don't know. It just seems like we've got to keep moving towards this and it feels like we're getting in the weeds of what we ask the committee to do and the board either agree with it or not.
I would agree. I think we should stick with the process, this is the recommendation. I would not waste time turning back to the students. Possibly the same thing, still have this type of conversation.
Now, recommendations, and I guess it's up to the committee, but going forward in the next rounds of doing this, as far as just coming back with the majority because we want to make sure that they resolve that before they bring it to the president. It's something.
The next time, why it should be...
I don't know. I guess that's just where, like, if it comes back the same, it comes back the same and we take that as inspiration when we vote.
But it feels like, so if it comes back and it's Summit, we're good with it. It comes back and there's still the same issue. I guess my point is it's always going to be something. Like, no, it's rare that we agree on everything altogether. So, why are we sending it back to them when, like I said, like, if it comes back and we're like, I don't think it was a good vote, the majority isn't there. The board is the final arbiter of the...
So, it's another data point?
It's another data point, but we got a lot of data points as a school division and I think that this is a pretty important part of it.
I would also like to say that I think we're asking for a vote to finalize it next month for action. And what I think would be very useful over the next month is the public input for these mates. I think that is the key component. Like, there's the community work, there's the vote at the school, then there's this moment and then there's another month before we make the final decision. So, I think that is the process and one that we can be like mindful of as we hear from the community over the next month about these mates. This is the first time the community's starting to hear and agree and I think they will have, they will want some input. And so, it's not like, okay, I'm never going to vote for Friendship. That's not it. If everybody comes in like, chill, you're just wrong, great. I'm happy to support Friendship. I think, you know, at this moment, the first time I heard this name, okay, I had a little thought, I have some issue with it, but that's what this process is. The committee has a lot of points. This meeting is another place and then the, you know, and then this public comment that we get over the next month will be another thing. So, I'm super excited, but I don't think we need to go back to the students. I don't think we need to go back and tell you they've done amazing work. And I just think we need to plot forward. We're climbing forward, everybody is moving forward. I think Ms. Dooley wanted to go back to the students, so I just want to honor everyone's time back. I don't think the minority of the board is ready to move on, but I don't know.
I do think like, you know, we're looking at Georgia election. So, you know, if something is very close, then there's another step, another round election to make sure, you know, that the process is, you know, coming out. That there is another step of the process, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I feel like. For the committee, I guess I, I feel uncomfortable, I wanna know that the choice is really something that's embraced by. The community of the school that's gonna be named. So I, I wanna make sure and I don't. This one I think is, is harder than, than the other one was. This is not very clear to me. I guess I would prefer to do another step to make sure that we're getting the right.
So we bring back the committee. Or vote, students, all the eliminated writers.
That is the will of the board.
And. Add from community. That's Jennifer's state. Yeah.
I mean, we, we can certainly do that, here we are December the first. And we can get, if we need to do another vote, we can certainly do that before the holidays. But then we'll be coming back, I don't know what the date of the January meeting is.
Really January.
We really be able to, I mean, we could take action in January, but I actually do want to have an appropriate public comment period. The committee's role is not public comment necessarily, like we heard from the public, but that is one aspect of it. But that's what this, you know, info and the action item process is.
We were coming to you in November. But December and when we added in the student vote, that just. When we have said to all six of the elementary schools.
Yeah, I just really appreciate that practice, thank you so much for everything you're doing. I, I know that this is always difficult, but I do appreciate your leadership. So do we have four people in favor of one thing? So yeah, we have, should we just take straw poll like? I'm happy to, my, my. If I'm gonna have to make a motion, which I'm happy to do, is to. Just, I don't think we need to take a motion, but just continue on the course that we are on and do the public comment period and then take action without having to go back to Clark or the committee. To. Hold third and fourth graders again.
And for clarification, public comment, same.
No, I don't wanna push the vote, no, I, I mean, just.
Just make sure that people can come in the meeting.
And, you know, we always have emails, like you can reach out to us over the holidays to tell us what you think about friendship or summit. And that's really what we would like to know from, I think, the community is. Friendship or summit comparable.
So now it's your understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
Starting tomorrow, work with Ms. Cho to get messaging out or public comment. And we will vote that prior to or at the January meeting with a vote at the January meeting.
I thought you were saying public comment, like just email school board at Sean's bill, like.
Okay.
I mean, I, I do think it might be useful to have a little bit of targeted messaging to the Clark community.
Well, we do have much of this information on the website that we have, far as the name. So everything we've done is on that website, a message went out or is going out this evening for several topics from school division. Information about this and slides nine walls.
Thank you, I, I would say that my, my vote at this point is to, having received the information from the committee. Is to continue in the normal course of things and vote in January on whether we per. Summit or friendship or some other name out of left field and.
Do a vote for now.
At the same time and continue on with that procedure.
If you're not doing any more votes, you're just doing a comment period.
That's what my vote.
Every time somebody says something, I write it down. I would just proceed and, like she said, and just have the vote and not.
Right. Seeing that, that's gonna be bad.
Get it back. So then moving forward, is the process changing? For the other schools? So we're gonna end up. I think that's the committee. With every. That's up to the committee, I've got micromanaging the committee, but we are gonna make decisions as well as officials.
The committee can change the, like we didn't start off with run choice voting, we didn't start off with runoff in that state. You learn with the process, you can't.
Oh, watch the schools that were first being potential, I mean, I don't wanna say penalized because I.
They're not.
I don't know, quite necessarily, but like.
They're not being allowed, it's like they are, they can all email during the month between now and June. The school, the students, everyone. Because the committee doesn't have to get it perfect, they just have to.
I don't know, I'm fine letting this go with my disagreement on record as it gets, so we can find.
I, I guess, you know, my guess is the committee is going to prefer and probably tweak our process going forward as well. Just to make sure that we're getting, you know, true, you know, majority vote. I'm guessing that we're gonna want to do that and maybe learn the difference, you know?
We've already changed the process once, we didn't have a student vote, you know, added that, so, yeah.
So I guess I, you know, and I will respect the majority here, but I don't understand the objection to having. If this is a bus, I really don't quite understand that.
Thank you. Appreciate all the time, but appreciate. Thank you.
We will have a budget to balance with Renee Hooper.
You have to talk real loud though.
Brilliant. Good evening, this is Dr. Girl, we're coming here to. We're working on the budget development and we've. So thinking, I'm going to go over the F one, twenty-two, twenty-three budget book for timeline for the budget process. The budget priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and review the plans for the S R spending and if they return to in person instruction. So we set out a goal to achieve a meritorious budget award by the Association of Stolen Officials. And we are so excited that the F one, three budget of one of the awards. We have. It was a lot, it was a lot of hard work, we took business steps. We applied for the pathway to the meritorious budget award for two years. And that's where we submitted two sections at a time to get their approval under criteria. So when we went to submit for this award, that we knew four out of five were of the. All four of the sections of the path. So to give you an overview, I hope everybody got their copy of the budget book. It's a nice big, big document. The exact summary is, is the standalone version, it can be lifted right out of the budget book. And read and give you everything you need to know at a very high level about the budget. The other three sections are very detailed, they have lots of detail about our organization and our financial statements. And, and our information state on section harvest and revenue. So it's a very thorough document and we should be very proud that it has been the meritorious budget. So the next slide is the budget timeline. And everybody thinks that the budget starts around October, November, when we hand out to the principals and budget holders. There are sections of a straight budget to. Right, to start completing their operating budgets. Ruins the budget process is, is the year round process. It starts in July when we bring up that current fiscal year budget. In August, we're preparing the budget calendar. And during this process, I, we have at least two budgets open, we have prior year budget open and we have the current year budget. Then in September, we're presenting the budget calendar to the school board. We're gathering input from our stakeholders, September, October and November. Or pretty much throughout the whole process, we give a good concentrated hour of thought to the process. We have already issued to the principals their budget information for November, so they're, they're working on that. Right now, here in December, you're getting this update. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting the governor's proposed budget, their. What they're gonna be giving out for revenues, that makes up about twenty-three percent of our budget. And tonight, you heard from the council. In January, we're gonna have a very heavy lift with the budget. That's where we take all that information and file and, and go over with Dr. Girl. So he can make his recommended changes to the school for the budget. And then in February, we'll have lots of meetings with our stakeholders, we'll have a meeting with city council to review the superintendent's proposed budget. And then in March, we'll take that adopted budget and present to the council. And then they'll adopt it in April. And then back in May, if the state made any technical adjustments, we'll be taking that and amending our budget, presenting it to the school board if necessary. And then in June, we're loading it into our financial system so we can release it into line to budget. So the budget process has four basic components. Our overall division revenue target, our allocations for enrollment. Projections that we made for enrollment, our support costs for finance and human resources and technology. And then our expenditures for our schools that are constructed. And all the information is compiled into the comprehensive budget where we balance it, the expenses to pay. So this next slide is budget part of the season. On October the twentieth, we had a budget work session. We discussed a bunch of priorities and. I, this is what, you know, I heard you say, so I kind of like put this out on, in these three bullets. The first one is maintain competitive self. And benefits, so we can retain and recruit our teachers and staff. The next one is support the social, emotional, mental health for our students and staff. And you'll hear later, this ties into our focus for as we're spending. And then the next one is our foundation of skills to improve their learning skills and reading and math. And achievement for our ethical outcomes for all students. So as part of our compliance with the S R funding, we have, we are required to have two plans, one for spending. And one for the safe return in person instruction. So first I'll address the S R spending plan. Both plans are located on our website. And, and the key is backslash COVID. The information can be found for the spending and the returns to schools. For the spending, our primary focus is social, emotional and mental activity for our love and safety. And today, we have spent our funding on technology. Our school's social workers and our social emotional learning council. And our crossing guards and care and safety assistance and, and COVID supply, which all falls right into that focus area. This is a table of the S R, use of the S funds. You can find this in the budget book and you may recognize it from our October twentieth presentation. Just wanna kind of like keep it up there, this is the, perhaps, that have been awarded to us and how much we have spent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And most of this follows our focus areas. The current plan is to continue spending the funds and carry it listed from the previous slide. And, and to continue to work with our city to transition the reoccurring school budget, operational needs to allow for the reoccurring growth. And we're always receiving public comment on, discussing all these plans, there are hopes for public comment. Either through the school board's public comments or on the website. And then this is the second plan, safe return in person instruction. And we're required to keep this plan updated every six months. We must see public comments, so this is our opportunity to, you know, keep it in front of the school board, in front of the public. And let everyone know that they can go out to the website and to view it and to provide any comment. And then lastly, this is our budget calendar for January, it's for the meeting dates that we have scheduled to meet on the budget. Are there any questions?
Have we? Checked with. Wasn't there something that we wanted to talk about with S funds that we were asking the governor's office, the P D O E, whether it's okay, like the.
That was on the one time bonus. And yes, we did get a follow up reply that we can use our S R funds for the one time bonus and we're really happy to hear that.
And the C I P, like the projects that are coming up. I'm grateful about the vote, but. So, you know, that's irrelevant, you guys.
Good evening, sorry about that, the, what you were thinking about is when we were trying to figure out if we, if it would be the. What would be the best way to work with the city government in order to not only support operational needs, but also support the configuration that our certificate cap of the project needs. Totally determined through our partnership and regular working with the city is that we, we can work with them. To continue to support our operational needs with programming priorities that are set forth under these funds in a way that allows them. To then better take local dollars to support the configuration. And when we approach this situation in that way, then there's no need to go through that special application process. Because we're continuing to use the dollars for their intended purposes that just do not require special application. And in the meantime, since the city, it's all in the timing of when they, you know, take the needs that are within that, that need to continue and then that's what we start. take the needs that are within that, that need to continue and then those things start coming from local sources. But this has been determined to be the best way to address both the, those operational needs as well as supporting the capabilities. Does that answer the question?
Are we, you're marketing or you're being a little, no, well, no, absolutely.
I don't think the city manager, the version of this discussion came up in the C I P, I think, actually, you know, they want to keep all their, their options open, but to this point, the partnership is moving to work as well, it's paid. And they haven't worked out all those details yet as to how it will run account for that, but the actual budget work will show these things and the conversations and the documentation of the conversations will show this. So all the details have all worked out or, you know, you can't say out there to manage things exactly within their budgeting process, but certainly the spirit of the conversations, there seems to be a very good, strong comment of understanding about.
No, I agree. I just don't want to get lost or, you know, that you're.
And the types of things we've talked about, I think that can still happen and certainly we can do that on our side as well. It's, it's, it's all a lot of mission. We do need to track it. There needs to be a common understanding as we move forward and navigating all of this and that issue, how we need to prepare for this and addressing operational needs and everything.
Hi, I think my only comment is about the priorities that I think we want to maintain and exceed our competitive market position in terms of teacher salaries. So somewhat just, I mean, it's not just, that is our priority. It's not just maintaining, but exceeding.
So we know that. I'm going to have a presentation from the group. I mean, you can see out of your mouth there, I can see. We're going to have a presentation later, but I was wondering specifically when we're looking at the S R funds that are designated for our section six alone, six of nineteen, and that's a spending date, right, by September, September, like how, how those are being utilized and how we plan to use them for like.
That funding is, is following the guidelines for the Title XVI and the special and preschool. So those, those funds are actually following the regular, regular guidelines. So they're being used in importance to that.
Re-anticipating use as a nominee.
Oh, oh, yes, we are definitely using those funds. A part, a lot of those funding will be spent this year. And you'll see that next year when we give an update through six thirty, twenty, thirty.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think the microphones are fixed, so we want to try to use them again. I can switch this back over to this, which is a much better quality of online view.
Pass, pass, pass. One more connection. Pass.
All right, we will have, we now have Dr. Odi in change of presenting the program studies.
Thank you.
Going to have to pull out my old principal and teacher voice, but I'm good. Thank you, Pat Cuomo. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening. Over the past several weeks, I've worked with a team of staff members to include principals and coordinators to update the program of studies for the 2324 school year. I'd like to thank the entire team for their work as we continue to streamline this document so that it is user friendly and comprehensive for families. This team has worked to have consistent, clear language as well as eliminate repetition and redundancy in the document. I thank you also to teachers and students for lending their voices to share what needed to be included in the program of studies. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will give a brief overview of the purpose of a program of studies, share the specific changes for schools for your review, and finally, answer questions and discuss next steps. Next slide, please. Our program of studies contains a list of academic, career, and technical, or other elective courses that incorporate secondary education. It also contains a complete list of electives that may be offered within the CCS sixth through twelfth grade program. Elective offerings are based on student interest and staffing availability. Next slide. So at this time, staff will present to you our 2324 program of studies. I believe Dr. Adam Hastings and Dr. Dahl are here with us tonight in case you all have questions for them, but as there are no changes for Walker or LMA for the 2324 school year, we will move forward with asking Mr. Jordan to come to share about Beaufort updates. And then we'll have Mr. Pitt come to talk about CHS updates. And finally, Stephanie Carter for K Tech. And we'll start with Mr. Jordan.
Welcome, Mr. Jordan. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Dr. Hastings and just like say, hey, we appreciate you.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. Sorry, I don't know how to fix this. So tonight, I would like to propose three course additions for the program of studies for Beaufort Middle School. Their first one being career investigations. We are required by the state to offer this as either an eight, I'm sorry, nine week, eighteen week, or thirty six week course. And we have the flexibility to do this either during our intervention and enrichment block, which is the first thirty five minutes of each day. We could also offer it as an elective, or we could do the self-paced online modules where our students work at their own pace and get support from teachers and counselors as needed. And with this, our students would look at various careers. They would also complete personality assessments and set their career goals. And this would also give their high school counselors another tool when assisting them with their career plans. Next slide, please. The next one would be, the next two courses that I'll be, that I'm proposing actually came from surveys that we had our students complete to find out what courses they would like to see offered at Beaufort. And the, the first one is photography. And this is a course where our students would just learn the basic functions of cameras and how to use the features of cameras to take quality photos. And then students will also learn how to improve those photos. Next slide. And then finally, our most popular one is culinary arts. Right now, during our intervention and enrichment period, when we surveyed our students at the beginning of the year to find out what they're interested in for this enrichment time, it's always cooking. Our students love to cook at Beaufort. And so when we did it for the program of studies, overwhelmingly, our students wanted to see some sort of culinary arts program offered. So we are proposing that as well, to be offered as an elective, where our students learn how to prepare, cook, and serve food, and focus on things such as salads and soups and vegetables and proteins and things like that. So with these three course proposals, there are no additional FTEs that would be needed. And so based on the regulation, obviously, from the state with career investigations and the information we've, and the data that we've collected from our students, I would like to propose these. And the teachers who are already staffed at Beaufort would be teaching these courses. So we wouldn't need any additional FTEs. Do you all have any questions at this time?
Ms. McKeever. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I don't see any, like, none of, I, you said the career investigations could be one, two, or three, you gave three options. What are you proposing here?
Well, right now, in terms of how we would offer the course, we're not really proposing anything, any particular way to offer it. That's going to be something that we're going to continue to talk about and work through as we are doing, you know, our master scheduling course selections. So that decision is in the media.
Okay, I just like really hate the computer modules as like a, as somebody as a parent who's done it for their children. So I just feel like, and I'm, yeah, so that makes sense. And as long, you know, I love the idea of culinary arts. And I guess I just have a lot of questions about just like what's happening now at, you know, like in terms of not culinary arts, but like, like math and English and, you know, how pre-engineering is going, like how, you know, so I have like future questions about, like, when we come to the program of study, it's like, you, these kids are going to have choices. We're giving them so many choices now at Beaufort. And apparently that's good. And I just wonder what they're going to not do now because they have these other new additional choices. And if that, like, I just have, have unintended consequences, is my.
Interesting.
Not that photography, you know, it's always a beautiful thing to, to learn. So I'm the, and culinary arts, Lord, that I'm really glad that you're bringing that back. So thank you. Keep up the good work. I just have future questions about what this means for enrollment in other classes and other electives. So thank you.
Ms. Morseberger.
I just wanted to add that I thought that, I agree with her about the computer modules, just the HR person trainings and stuff like that. But I think that as a class or in the morning meeting, that it's a nice area for discussion. I think it's nice. I just, I think all of these are great additions. And I think that, I think it benefits the students to have a variety of choices so that when they're thinking about careers, they can kind of get their feet wet and try different things. And, yeah, I, I, I think that these are all, all great. So thank you.
Mr. Bryan.
Mr. Jordan, with these new additions, are they going to be year round options? Or for an example, culinary arts, will it be like a nine week rotation? How, how will these classes work? Through the master schedule?
So the easiest way to do it is year long. What we found this year with, with our schedule is that when courses are semester, you have to make sure that you can pair it with something else. And so the easiest way to do would be year long, which is, but we'd have to, you know, talk about that a little bit more and see what's best within the master schedule.
So they'll be paired with, with another option.
If it's semester, yes.
Okay, semester, okay. These are all good options. And I think it gives our students additional choices. That's a great idea. Thanks.
Yeah, I also think these are really good additions. And so I'm really happy you're offering these. I was just curious about the culinary arts, where is, is that going to be working in conjunction with the cafeteria staff? Is it going to be, are they going to be cooking in the cafeteria at Beaufort or?
So right now, we have, you know, ovens and stoves and microwaves and everything in one of our classrooms.
Oh.
In the classroom that we use for urban farming. On the other side of that classroom, there's a full kitchen.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we used to have family.
And so that's what we do during our intervention and enrichment block.
Well, we're available to taste test anything that the students prepare.
You can also work on invitations.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Dooley.
Sure, I'm going to ask this of you as well, Mr. Pitt. Just your thoughts on how you envision the expansion, expansion of these course offerings? Oh, engaging students that were perhaps not serving as well with what we're offering now? Perhaps students that are high flyers that you're interacting with more than you might want to, and how the expansion of these courses are going to better serve them?
Well, from what we've seen so far, so right now, as I said, we offer cooking during that intervention time, but we also offer, we have a video announcement club during that time. We also offer yearbook. And what we've learned is that those high flyers, they're highly engaged. It's something that they really enjoy and they look forward to. So I think it'll be really good for them, especially, you know, if they're not taking some of the, you know, the high school credit electives that we offer. And so I think, you know, this is another way to get, you know, other students engaged who may not want those high school credits.
Any other questions? Is that it? Ms. Bird, any questions or comments about this? So just for clarification regarding the career investigations, I heard you say it's a state requirement, so each student will have to take this at some point. Correct? Okay. Yeah, and I agree, a face to face, get them involved, hands on interaction would be my preference, I think. But that sounds interesting. And then as far as photography, and you said student survey, so how, what kind of response did you get for that? Do you have percentages roughly, just?
I don't remember the percentages right off the top of my head, but I do remember Dr. Odi and I were looking at the responses and cooking was the most popular one. And then photography was, was, I wouldn't say it closed second, but it was second.
And so is that then going to be, are we going to like maybe get some cameras from the high school that we can share with Beaufort as they replay, or what, what's that going to look like?
That would be nice, because we work with the high school a lot, you know, for different things. But we also, you know, in submitting our budget proposal this year, we did put in their money for both of these classes.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I, you know, I've seen the, the setup they have here at the high school and it's pretty nice. So I'd imagine, I'm curious to see what the, the cost associated with that, but I think it's a fun class to take. And I mean, I just feel like it's interesting that, you know, we, at some point, it was recommended to do away with family consumer sciences, and I don't recall why, but, but now there is an interest in that. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're engaging students. I think it's important that we hear their voice and keep them engaged. But I also am a little leery about, you know, add this, then take it away, and then add it back, just what that means to us as a board and the cost to support doing that. But that's just a comment. It's not a criticism. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it might just be a follow up or something for an email. I'm wondering about the course of study for Beaufort. I'm always curious how, when we're talking about the classes kids can take, the, the high school credit, where we start to see the deviation and like, all kids are taking a certain level math or all kids. I would, I would be interested in how the course of study, how the math portion plays out in, at Beaufort, at middle, in middle school. Like how many stu, like, at what point do you say like, okay, these students take this math class and these students take another math class just to see what that looks like or how we get there? And it can be for another, like, just as a follow up. That was just a question ahead.
For specifically math or just?
I'm thinking about math specifically with the courses that kind of, when you get into the high. I'm thinking about math specifically with the courses that, kind of, when you get into the high school, that kind of puts you on a certain track.
So, right now, we do offer Algebra I and Geometry in addition to Pre-Algebra VII and Pre-Algebra VIII. And so, what we're doing is a, a team from Buford, including myself, and a team from Walker with Dr. Hastings, are working with Dr. Odie to develop a criteria so that we can identify students who are ready, based on that criteria, to take Algebra I when they're coming in as seventh graders. And so, if a student is, and, and a lot of times, that's based on math scores and SOL scores. And so, when, if students are ready to go enter into those high school credit courses, then they do take them. And if not, then we enroll them in Pre-Algebra VII or Pre-Algebra VIII.
Do they take those, can they take them in high school?
Take.
But, like, if you don't take Algebra I or Geometry, then you can take it in high school?
Absolutely. Yep. If you don't take, if you don't take, well, Algebra I is a, is a ninth-grade course. So if you don't take it at Buford, you definitely take it at the high school.
Okay. I think I figured out all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Mr. Pitt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Dr. Gerly, and Board members. This is my first school board meeting in person, so thank you for allowing me to be here. Oh, absolutely. So, well, we have, starting with math, then we'll go to CTE and finish with the languages. The first course that we have proposed, or it's a new course, AP Calculus. This course is open to all students. This course provides prepared students for careers in mathematics, physics, biology, health sciences, social science, and data science. The course prepares students for college-level math courses while earning college credits with, with passing the AP exam. And as my counterpart mentioned, and this is going to be a consistent theme, this course does not require any additional FTEs or staff. Data science, and also a new course, which also provides career, careers in data collection, data science, data collection, and analytics. This course is open to all students who have completed Algebra I, completed Algebra I math class, which is a verified credit student. This course also does not require any additional FTE or staff. We are recommending for AP Physics that this course be replace, that replace AP Physics C. This course will provide succinct and rigorous curriculum in conjunction with college preparatory and/or college-level collegiate-level course. This course also does not require additional FTE or staff. Now, we're going to transition to CTE, Career Technical Education, so let me make sure I'm all these acronyms. Real Estate Course provides a, a career, a career pathway within our market program. This course was added based upon student interest. My outstanding coordinator of CTE, Ms. Fitzgerald, shared a CTE Needs Assessment Survey based upon the information that was shared. This was, this is how this course was added. Does require an endorsement. We have someone who's interested, we have a staff member, does not have it currently, but is, will be working towards this particular endorsement. This course is not, again, again, this course does not require any additional FTEs or staff. We have the Unmanned Aircraft, provides yet another career pathway with our engineering program. Courses are based, again, upon student interest, based upon a survey that was conducted, and also some comprehensive workforce data around the state, which is a, sees a projection and increase in this particular field. This course also does not require an, an additional FTE or staff. Again, we have staff members in the building. The courses that are being proposed are based upon the staffing and individuals who are endorsed in this area. I don't, I don't need to speak to that. I was going to just go to the next slide. Cybersecurity Fundamentals. Again, we want our, our, our learners, our students to be college career or military-ready. I know we don't have a military program, but that is the, the goal that they, as they leave the building. So yet again, we have a, a course that provides yet another career pathway with our agricultural, oh, excuse me, I'm tripping. Excuse me. Cybersecurity provides yet, yet another career pathway, computer science, cross-curricular. So you have maths and science. Information is, or data was collected based upon a workforce comprehensive needs assessment and a projection of the increase in this particular field based upon information that was collected. Does not require an additional FTE and/or staff. Now, Introduction to Natural Resources, Ecology and Systems, provides yet another career pathway in the agricultural ed program. Course was added based upon student interest, captured in a CTE survey, workforce data, projection in this field. Students can begin work right after high school. Again, goes back to that, well, what are we going to, what are students doing as a, prepared to leave our building? This course does not require an additional FTE and/or staff. Music and Production, music production and recording. As you know, we have a renowned fine arts department. And we wanted to be able to provide an opportunity for our students to have an identity within the fine arts department. Everyone, everyone is not instrument savvy. So this is yet, not only a course that provides a, a career pathway, it's a, provides interest in beginning music, does not require an additional FTE. And it will allow students to, again, see themselves as part of the, the program. Last, we have Mandarin IV or Chinese IV, which aligns with our language sequencing course. Because we are in all of our other language courses that are provided, Spanish, Latin, and German. We have all Level IV courses. Students will continue to gain proficiency in the Chinese language. And this course is, also does not require an additional FTE. Closing. In my closing, as you can see, there have been at least two consistent themes. One, it prepares, prepares students to be college and career-ready, does not require any additional staffing, and allows our students, again, to be prepared to be successful post-high school.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Dooley, start with you.
Yes, I think the courses I'm most excited about are the ones that really expand the opportunities for graduating students that are ready for not just college, but careers. And so, I appreciate the expansion of the CTE programs. Mr. Morris and I had the opportunity to attend the CTE Advisory Committee, I think that's what it's called, our meeting yesterday morning. Thank you, Ms. Kestrel. And so, really encouraged by the work that's being done to make sure that we are truly providing a comprehensive high school experience for all students and really building a more robust offering of electives that have an end goal. And so, I think that is really exciting. I appreciate your team's work on that. A concern that I voiced yesterday that I'll bring up again is just trying to make sure, I appreciate that we don't have staffing needs at this time. But I don't want to create courses that are, you know, individual teacher-dependent. So if that employee were to leave, that all of a sudden, we've built these programs, and now they go away. And so, working with our HR department to make sure that, you know, we are continuing to recruit teachers that can fill these roles. And then, as a board, working with our state-level representatives to try to address some of the barriers to CTE certification for teachers, whether it's career switchers or add-on endorsements. You know, the CTE is not as easy as just sitting for a praxis and adding on an endorsement. And so, whether it's, you know, providing financial support for teachers to take courses, you know, whatever people who are smarter than me can do, those are my two or three cents.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft.
Yeah. Well, these are exciting and a very diverse array of offerings. And I'm wondering, how were you able to get the staff to, did the staff, teaching staff come forward with these ideas? Or did you have to twist arms to do this?
No, I just have an amazing staff here at CHS, and we have amazing individuals in leadership roles who are, you know, in their department meetings, collect information, and just came forth for what they, you know, what they have. And based upon some conversations and also captioning what interests our students, kind of shared what will be, allow our students to be successful and also have our teachers be interested in or excited about delivering that instruction to those students.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that we're not just adding to their workload, that somehow there's some trade-offs here, some things that they won't be doing if they're doing this.
Yeah, so we'll be opening sections and open, taking a section away and add that to other members within our department who can provide us support.
Great. The, just a couple of other specific things. The VDOE course on data science, is that, do they provide the curriculum for that? It's a, I mean, that's the only one that was DOE-initiated? And is that a required course now?
No, it's not a required course, but it is a course that once their students have finished their requirements, if they would like to, because they need at least three. This could be another class that's open to them that they can take. And provides more of a relevant holistic next step. When I, what am I, what, what, how can I use this, my math concepts in my job fit?
I think that's great. Yeah, I know. And the, finally, the, the natural resources course, what are the jobs that this leads to?
Social science, any type of archaeology or anthropology within those fields, collecting information. I don't want to just go off the top of my head.
Can I help you a little bit?
Absolutely.
As an HR specialist for the National Park Service? Yes. Biology, chemistry, safety, occupational health, archaeology, anthropology, wildlife biologist, you know, resource management, fish streams, the possibilities are endless.
Okay. I, I was comfortable with it because that's all social sciences, so, yeah.
It takes a village, doesn't it?
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Tag of friend, I appreciate it.
But thank you for all the work on this.
No, no, no. Let me yield to my coordinators. They're, they set me up for success, also Dr. Odie, who made sure I was very thorough in my presentation today. So I take no credit. All credit goes to the team for, you know, being here with me.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you very much. I'll echo Ms. Dooley because I was in the advisory committing, committee meeting as well for CTE. And I, I guess I'll just add on just a little bit in terms of the credentialing to make sure we have sustainable programs in addition to making sure that we have teachers, also working with recruiting certain universities, such as Virginia State University, which has agriculture, and continuing to pull from that, from that student body. In addition, this is a lot of data. There's a lot of classes. And I'm kind of interested in how the school division, and I guess specifically Charlottesville High School, like, what systems do we use to, to get the student input of their career aspirations?
I know that, as we shared, this is, we use the CTE Needs Assessment Survey, and I know it's probably more a specific name that Ms. Fitzgerald used. We also have utilized a, a Google, a Google form that some of our school counselors have created. There's something that we also want to move forward with, and I don't want to speak too loosely, but we're going to have more of a, a comprehensive use of Naviance. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm going to throw him a, say, life vest here. That's one of the areas through the program of studies that we've recognized is just that area. It's a deficiency area. It's one of the areas we can improve upon. We have a program. We want to better utilize it. It will most certainly help us to create a more robust, a program of studies. And then, when we present this program of studies next year, it won't look this, I mean, the presentation won't even be this way because we will start with the student voice. And I think you will hear more about how we start to put some courses to rest and then how we continue. It's always going to be a fluid process. I know Ms. Torres or someone said, like, you know, one of the worries is always starting classes, starting, stopping classes. But it's all, it's about what's happening with industry needs. So we know what happens with, how students have an interest in college preparation. But then, it's like, what happens when students with workforce? And so, it is always, it will always be a fluid process. But, yeah, we will utilize the career and academic plans to drive the course request.
And also, continuous support with Buford and Career Investigations. I appreciate you, sir.
No, it, it starts young. It, it starts early. It starts early. The exposure is greatly appreciated. I'm excited for some of these courses, like, even during our budget priorities. We talked about foundational skills, and really, we're talking about foundational skills just in a different way. We're talking about a lot of these courses. Data science, huge right now, huge right now. So I'm, I'm excited about a lot of these. I am greatly appreciative of them and a little jealous that I did not have the opportunity, to be honest with you.
Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Pitts, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work and your staff and those of you who had input. This is exciting, array of elective courses. Oftentimes, as counselors, sometimes we didn't know where to find the right fit for students. And so, I'm sure as you all are transitioning out of college, writing letters of recommendations, the counselor now beginning to meet with the students to prepare for, for next year's classes. So that's exciting, especially the music production. I kind of like that. I was on my way out the door to school board meeting, and one of my former mentees is interested in, in getting a group of, working with a group of students with African drumming. So we'll talk more about that. So didn't have time to really talk to him. So, thank you all for your hard work. This is exciting.
Ms. Morrisberger.
Welcome to Charlottesville. We're glad you're here. Looking forward to see all the awesome things you're going to do. I, I'm excited about the, the courses you told us about. My, the questions I have are, or comments, thinking out loud, is just that with the high school, I always questioned the graduation rate and us moving kids into the world, whether they're prepared or not. And so, I hope with the career and technical education, that the students get the same type of support. type of support, the same way we tell kids about college, this is how you do it, you take the trips, you see the campus. Kids that are going right into careers and working after high school don't get the baby step of like college living to manage their life, and they don't get that military skill building up to make an individual. So I'm just hoping to see like, you know, how our counseling department is going to help them and what connections we're making, like I know they mentioned Virginia State previously, but like what connections we're making to help them, like we've given you the training, these are the careers you can do, you understand how to use some of the software, the programs, now here are some places you can go instead of just, like you could become, you know, an archaeologist, but here's the next steps and here's someone, you know, a place you can go or someone who can tutor you in that direction or, you know, mentor.
Well, can I, can I interject?
Yes, please.
So, again, I may, I walked in on a, a goal mine here at Charlottesville High School. School Council Department has shared with me that they've, what they've done is they made sure throughout the, since, you know, falls, as I, you know, I got here August 15th, and I just kind of talked to them about some of my goals, but they've, throughout all the lunches, make sure they have somebody represented from, this is the idea they took on their own, took on, took off on their own, make sure they have someone from the military, some type of college representation within the atrium area. For one, you know, lunch is a high socialization time, which promotes, you know, we listen to music, but we also have things for them to do and people to interact with, fresh food, some college representatives, we have a UVA representative, so just having them exposed to it throughout the fall, so when spring comes for our upper class and more so our seniors, they have been exposed to that information, so they're not waiting in May to start applying, they're being exposed now. I know that we also have Abbott who does college tours, so again, our students are being exposed to college and our different opportunities. So this is something that, again, they've taken lead on, and I've just been kind of part of the process with just saying, hey, who else can we get to come through and visit our building? We had the president of the Virginia State University, I'll come and, and share some swag with us and talk to our students during lunch. So anytime you have those type of individuals who are influential in higher ed or just even the career industry, come and just kind of, and that representation piece, because now you see yourself in this institution, it makes you want to buy in. So hats off to my school council department and Ms. Fisero.
Thank you, and welcome to Charlottesville again, and we, we do come at you fast with things, but I just want you to know, I appreciate the work you're doing and I'm glad that you're here.
Thank you so much.
Ms. McKeever. Hi, Mr. Pitt, Jennifer McKeever. So I, thank you, I, you know, we've all said thank you, I appreciate you, this work. I, the, there's a couple of specific issues I have with the program of study, nothing of the kind of elective necessarily, like those are all great, but two kind of changes or offerings, I feel like that are, just don't make much sense, is the, taking the physics two out and the AP pre-calculus, adding that as well. So I can't, so I'm looking at the, okay, so let's just start with the physics two. You made a change to replace AP physics, add to replace AP physics C, AP physics two, which basically AP physics C is, my understanding is that they don't actually have calculus in physics, C versus physics two has calculus. My, please, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's the other way around.
Okay.
Physics C has calculus, and we've had that for a while. Dr. Shields taught it before he left, and physics two, and physics one does not have calculus, it's algebra-based, and then physics two is a continuation of physics one that is higher level but does not have calculus.
Okay, so.
So we're taking away the calculus-based one.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Which I find problematic.
As do I.
Okay, excellent.
And.
I love when we find agreement with the students.
And as do, like, I'm part of Bacon, I did engineering for two years, and knowing that we had offered this fantastic calculus-based physics course, which is as a second level AP physics course at CHS, it's a fantastic introduction to college physics, whereas I think stepping down to physics two is, well, it's, it's that, it's a step down, and students who are interested in taking two levels of AP calcu, or AP physics are, are showing an interest and are looking to do that to prepare themselves for further exploring that topic, where I, as far as I can tell, I've talked to some teachers and my peers and engineers, and engineering teachers, and physics, the calculus-based physics is a better preparatory class for college physics, and any, if you're going into a STEM field, physics, calculus-based is what you want to take.
So, yeah, so my point is, please don't take away the calculus-based physics. It's just, you cannot live in this town and then just take away physics that is incredibly challenging for many students, and especially when you're adding in all of this great aeronautical, you know, parts to the engineering, where math is so critical, you cannot, like, it's just so critical, and calculus, I just think watering down physics is not the way to go. And you could, you could, if you take AP physics C, right, that's what we currently offer?
That's what we currently offer.
Okay, you can pass the AP physics two, AP, no problem, if you need that credit. If you pass AP physics two, you're going to need to take physics in college. My child was able to skip physics in first year of college because he had the physics C. And again, I think we should promote all of these great science-based engineering in the classes, but they cannot be watered down, especially at the higher levels. Eleventh and twelfth grade is not a time to be watering down, you're going to need to actually be prepared for college, and there's no point in saying, okay, I passed physics two, and now I have to take physics C, and it's so different than what I took in high school. Yeah, because they took out a whole subject area that is critical, and I just think it doesn't do our students any favors to take it away. So humbly, I would ask, what do you, is, is there any way to put that back? Or what is it that you're thinking?
This is a recommendation, correct? Just a recommendation.
I, I have a question. Is there something that has changed? Because we've offered it for a little while now, is there something that has changed that has made it less feasible? Is, I, I know a bunch of people who would like to take it, I don't know if that's just my, my class, but is there significantly lower interest? What is the, like, what are we reacting to?
No, hi, welcome. First time she's here, too. No pressure.
Hi.
Sorry.
Teacher.
By the what?
The physics teacher, currently. So what was decided was that they sent me the recommendation, this was something that's been discussed multiple years. It comes down to accessibility, and for now, for students entering into physics, AP physics C, they had to have calculus. So they want to eliminate that barrier and have more students offer that next step into physics, which is physics two. Then the rationale was that it was going to be alignment with collegiate physics. For them, they said, this is what I'm going to read from them, that, yes, is it Andrew Manning? Andrew Manning. They said they went and reached out to several colleges and that they saw that it was a growing trend in collegiate physics to focus on introductory courses, such as the algebra-based courses instead of the calculus courses. They see that this provides students a conceptual foundation of physics instead of getting into the calculus pace. So they're more focused on teaching those topics and concepts of physics, but not weighing it down with the calculus part of it. The second part was the current curriculum, the C, there's 12 units, there's two different parts which you are, pull it over, it's the mechanics and electricity and magnesium, magnetism, sorry, my gosh. So there's 12 courses currently, he teaches units, and if you think of that in a year, that's a lot. So it's not getting to the depth and breadth of physics that he wants it to. Physics two allows it to not water down, but you're actually getting seven units where he's digging into those concepts and really teaching them those foundational skills that will prepare them for college without having calculus as a barrier.
Which that will become a barrier when they get to college.
Um, what, again, this is, this is what they provided to me, is that when they did their, I want to make sure I got this correct, I want to say it correctly. While being exposed to calculus-based physics at high school level can prepare students for the methods used in calculus-based physics at the collegiate level, there has been a growing trend in collegiate physics to focus introductory courses on algebra-based. So we're preparing them, but then when they go into college, it's, okay, well, now it's algebra-based, and so now they have two courses of algebra-based instead of going into the calculus.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's, I'm very grateful for your talking to the teacher about it and the, and the recommendation, I think that's really, really smart, and I really appreciate it. I just disagree, I think, again, I appreciate his experience as well, I just disagree. I think we, the kids who are taking physics C right now are, there's going to be continued need and desire for that. We have plenty of children who are taking calculus and who can do the work of physics C, and even if it's 12 units, those students can do the 12 units, it's not, I mean, the teacher may not be able to get to it all, but certainly they are able to get there. And I think, so that's just, I pre, I just, I just disagree, so thank you, that's all about physics C. Do you have a thought?
Just kind of in conclusion of this thought, I, I definitely know a lot of people that are going to be very disappointed that it is going to be taken off of, not offered anymore. I know that that's going to disappoint some engineering teachers, and so I think that is a little frustrating to us, especially since it is the second level, like it's required, like it's a relatively prerequisite course to take physics one, there are some exceptions, but to take AP physics one, which is algebra-based, before you take the calculus-based one, so you're getting that introduction in the algebra-based one first, and so I think just like the slowing down to take physics two rather than physics C is, it's just disappointing to see, it's frustrating, but that's my two cents.
And it comes down to the accessibility, I think, was their number one concern. If you're taking out the prerequisite of the calculus, now they can go into that second pathway of physics, and what did they say, they only needed algebra three trig or pre-calc to take AP.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, and you know, in a perfect world, we could do both, but it's not.
It, it is a separate math course. Oh, yeah, oh, for sure.
I just, so I, I think the.
We don't want the math to be a barrier for students to be introduced to the next level of physics.
Okay, so offer two. You can't, you're, who are you, you're holding down so many different kinds of people, and it's like you're making a huge adjustment for children who are already in school and who have come to the anticipation of being able to take physics C. So that's my, my concern, is that the accessibility applies to one, you know, it's inaccessible then, the calculus-based physics.
I think the current enrollment, when I shared, I think we only had like 18 students currently taking AP.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
That's a pretty significant amount, like how many do you think will take physics two?
This was, again.
Exactly, we have no idea, it might be 12.
Right. But then I'm thinking, how many wouldn't have that opportunity? I guess I'm, I'm trying to think, maybe, I'm seeing it through the lens of accessibility, I want as many people as I can to get to take that science course, but not have the math as a barrier.
I just think that science and math are great collaboration, and so to continue to offer the calculus-based physics is, I mean, it's just silly to not offer it, especially for children who can do that and have been doing that. If you're taking away science rigor for students who are in midstream, I think that's a problem.
Does it have to be removed from the program of studies? I mean, how many courses do we have sitting dormant in the program of studies that don't make it due to enrollment?
Well, I think that that's, so one of the things that Dr. Odie and I have talked about, and this is my soapbox, so I apologize, I think we have a lot of work to do, because historically, we just add, add, add. And so I think what we can do through this process is, we don't have to retire this course, I think we have to go back and look at our master schedule. I mean, 18 is, I mean, it's, it's a class, I mean, it's one class, so I would be interested to see what else is the teacher teaching, because I would hope that those, all 18 of those students are in one class, and that's not two classes of nine. Yes, ma'am.
May I add, given the track, the science track at CHS, where you start with biology in ninth grade, chemistry in 10th grade, and you need to finish, you need, yeah, you need to finish those to continue on to the next science levels, and need to take AP physics one before you can take AP physics two, so we're cutting down our numbers of people that are even eligible for the class, regardless of whether it's two or C, to just seniors anyway, and so, and then again, like, I'm not sure that it's, that the difference is going to allow, the difference of people that are not eligible for, for physics C but are eligible for physics two, I don't think it's going to be a very big difference of significant at all.
It, it's not, and I think that, I think that that's why as a system, we have to retool, because the question started earlier about math, so if we're offering algebra one to seventh graders, it becomes the tale of two cities, the tale of two schools, and as Dr. Coffey stated, it's about the access part. So I think when we talk about, I mean, we don't have to, again, we don't have to retire the course, we can figure out a way to offer this course more to, we can figure out a way, we can add this course without retiring. I think what we ultimately need to do is, how many students are we teaching these 18 students in one period? Or are we teaching these 18 students across multiple? Because if we're teaching 18 students across multiple periods, that's the disservice to the rest of the student body and to the master's schedule, because we're limiting opportunities. And so, no, I think we can, we can bring that back to the committee, we don't have to retire it. I think the bigger issue here is ensuring that we're not limiting these courses, you know, we're not sitting with courses with five and six students in it per period, which I would hope that that's not the case.
I guess what I'm thinking is, because I did ask about the math earlier, is that, I, I don't know how the world of AP works, because when I was a kid, you could take, you could go dual enrollment at VCU in Richmond, so if my high school didn't have to offer every AP class, you could, there were multiple tracks, and I guess my question is, we're already, or thought, is that we're already in middle school, the, the tracks are starting, whether we want to or not, and I think it's great that you can get to college, and you can say, I don't even have to take the intro class, that's great, but I think that also as a division, we have to say, if we have kids graduating that aren't even ready for a community college, that they haven't gotten what they need, that accessibility is important, and it's great. And it's great to go to college and not have to take some classes, but is there a cutoff? Are we saying like, okay, math? Physics calc, you know, we're doing these things, but at some point, like. It's a tale of two schools because it's amazing to be able to take three years of advanced calculus, physics and science. But. It's also like. To me, it feels like it's condensed it down, but at some point we have to look at all these offerings and say. For all these offerings, we still have a difference in equity and how people graduate and at what level? And how far as a high school, do some students go? Beyond prepared from high school, like we're getting you, you're not going to have to take the first year of math or the second year of math in college. While other students aren't getting. What they need at all. So at some point. There has to be a cutoff in the program of study and everything that we offer and everyone's not going to like it and everyone's not going to be happy, but. We have a lot, a, a huge program of study for such a small school. And to me, there's something we need to examine when some students are going so far and other students aren't. And this isn't particular to that class. It's just food for thought that. AP classes, like it's, we have them and it's great, but if you don't pass the test, then it was for not anyway. And I just feel like it, this is a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot. And I think that if colleges are saying, we need these classes to be accessible, that it's important. That we kind of listen to that, but I don't have all the answers. Those are just my thoughts.
Anybody else?
I just have to get to my next comment.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Because honestly, um, I just want to be clear that as a whole, I'm happy to have that conversation about the tale of two cities, I mean, two schools. But I just don't think the program of study just kind of, you know, lay it down on us. Oh, well, if you're, if you care about physics C, then you're, you're not, you know. You're not focused on equity. Like that is not, I think we need to have an actual conversation about these things rather than just like. Assuming. But also I just want to get to AP pre calculus, which I think is also a redundant course. We have DE pre calculus and we have pre calculus. We don't need another AP class. Just a perfect example of how we don't need AP pre calc. And I just think we already do DE pre calc. Pre calc is a great. You know, is a hard class. And I just think AP is so limiting. They just do not teach in a creative, accessible way. And, uh, while the teachers teach in a creative, they just add material is, and the way it's tested is so specific. It's not useful. So I just think like getting AP credits. For the sake of getting AP credits is not the goal. And we have enough offerings around pre calc. I think we don't need AP pre calc. Um, I would love to understand a little bit more about why we made that choice of, and. And. Excuse me?
I was looking, Ms. Farrell's not, I was looking as if Ms. Farrell's. If she was here, she's not here.
Um, and also I just like on page 13, um, that STEM and engineering pathway, I think is. Beautiful. It's a great graph. I love it. And I would like to see. All of our pathways identified this way. And like, I just want to see that, like I, I looked forward to the program of study. Um, and I didn't see, maybe it's in there, um, but I just didn't get to that. I would love to see this, this pathway laid out this way for all of the pathways that we have.
Ms. Fitzgerald feels the same way. We all, we all. I will say that, um, people are used to seeing this format. And so people, I think it, I think if you're willing, we are already there. I think people are visual learners and so they would, they can see it both ways. And I think ultimately they would just like to. See vertically how these courses align.
I mean, and, and one of the things that's so interesting was the aerospace technology. Cause like, it's like, okay, how are we going from aerospace to unmanned? And by the way, you need a lot of flipping math to do unmanned. Coding and aircraft systems. And I just, like, you can't get through our engineering pathway without having very significant knowledge of math. You just can't like the coding is, is dramatic. And if you're doing a good job with these unmanned aircraft. Systems like through bacon. You are doing a lot of math. Um, so I just hope that we can make math exciting and fun and AP pre calc is not the way to do it, in my opinion. DE or regular. Pre calc, just taught honors level course or whatever, um, is where, where I think we should be focusing and focusing less on AP, more on. DE and just normal. Credits.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Morse.
Last thing, I'll just echo the last thing Ms. McKeever said, as well as Shundra and that focus more on DE opposed to AP. Which I think a little bit contradicts, um, keeping, uh, AP, uh, was it physics two?
C.
C. No, well, keeping either one of them. I think just move towards the, I know, and specifically PVCC has physics on all three levels. So to think about that as in dual enrollment, um, I think the interesting thing is we have to figure out how do we make sure that we have our teachers credential to teach the dual enrollment. So I, I hear, I hear what everyone is saying. But it does take a little bit investment to make sure that we have the, the right credentials. So that we don't have the additional barrier of a AP test that some people take, some people don't take, some people pass or fail. And then you, you get everything that you want in terms of your, your math challenge within physics. And you still get your guaranteed credit as long as you pass the class and not have this additional test.
I like it.
Thank you for your feedback.
I just also wanted to say that in the program of studies, it says that Buford, that pre-algebra is actually seventh and eighth grade. And I am concerned that there's not just like a pre-algebra seven that will lead, lead to algebra one in eighth grade. Is that? Sorry, Mr. Jordan.
Go ahead.
But like just having pre-algebra seven and then being able to, okay.
So. Students who take pre-algebra seven at Buford, um, do have the opportunity to take algebra one as eighth graders. We do have some, some eighth graders. This year I know we had 50 students who, um, took pre-algebra seven last year and now, and are now taking, um, algebra one as eighth graders.
But clearly there's a, something's missing from the program of, I mean, from the pre-algebra seven that, right? Because you're going into pre-algebra eight. There's, there's.
I think just the, I, I think it's just the naming because really I think in most places it's math eight.
It's math, in most places it's math seven.
Right. It's math seven, math eight. This was, this part was new to me, the pre al, pre-algebra seven and pre, yeah, it's usually math seven, math eight. So that's a, I think that's a Charles, yeah. It's just that pathway. I don't know if it's really pre, oh, Ms. Swift is here. I know she's not the math coordinator, but it's, it's. Not pre-algebra seven and it's. Right.
But we split the course, I recall, like we split, we, so that people would have more success in ninth grade. With algebra, it was like a two-year course to, so that people wouldn't, wouldn't have to be speeding through pre-algebra. So that was when my recollection of like splitting the pre-algebra class. Right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're good. Mr. Pitt.
Oh, did you have anything? Do you have anything?
Do I?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, thank you very much. I think everybody else has covered it.
Hey, Mrs. Carter.
Good evening. Um, I, at K-Tech, we have very few changes, but we do have some. And so I wanted to present those to you tonight. We are recommending moving EMT and Vet Science to be strictly dual enrollment courses. PVCC doesn't, um, due to SACS requirements, we're not allowed to have mixed classes. So you can't have non-dual enrollment. And dual enrollment students in the same class. These, both of these courses have very, very strong pathways to the community college. So. We, um, students that come to that, to those classes will have to qualify for dual enrollment. We want to add a dual enrollment option for English 12 while keeping regular English 12. And we are, would like to recommend adding algebra three as a math option in addition to the other math options that we have. Over the last few years, we've worked really hard to, um, offer academic options that reduce barriers to access for, so the students have room in their schedule. To come to K-Tech if they, if they so choose. So those are the recommended changes that we are putting forward.
Ms. Dooley, any questions?
Any questions? It's a new course. Um, it is a new course and, uh, it's supposed to be kind of like, um. Algebra functions and data analysis, but one step up. So it should be, it should be a final algebra course and it's new. Um, I can provide a, a program of, I can provide a course description via email if that's okay. We have, mostly we serve 11th and 12th graders, so it gives them a math option that will meet their graduation requirement.
I guess I'm just wondering if there is a math option that's more geared towards like workplace readiness. But that's my lack of knowledge about approved math courses. Um, so perhaps algebra three is it. Do we have a teacher certified?
We do. There's.
I'm sorry, I was going to the English 12, DE, English 12.
We do. We have a teacher. None of, none of these changes would impact FTEs at all. And we have, uh, our English teacher does qualify to teach dual enrollment. Yes.
Dr. Kraft, oh, is she gone? Is she there?
She's not there.
Me too. Mr. Morse.
Can you, uh, I, I guess I'm gonna go off of Ms. Dooley a little bit as well, um, in terms of the algebra three. Uh, in terms of something more workforce related. I know that we have a collaboration in terms of geometry in the, um, I'm sorry, can you remind me, geometry and carpentry?
Yes.
What's the?
Yeah. And we offer physics in our electricity class.
So I'm just curious, can you help me understand the thought process of algebra three opposed to, we were just talking about dual enrollment. Maybe is there another option to embed another course within the trades, uh, courses that we currently have?
One of the things, one of the things I'll say about embedding courses directly into, um, our trades is that sometimes that does create barriers. So. Because we can't then pull out students from all of the trades that may need a math. Um, when, in talking with our math teacher, um, Dr. Barron, I think you know Dr. Barron, and he joined our team and he's amazing. And. Um, he recommended algebra three, um, and he really, he does a great job of teaching the classes. And working in, working in the workforce readiness, um, to everything that he teaches. He teaches geometry and AFDA currently. He felt that this would be a really good op, a, a really good additional option for our students that maybe needed a higher level math than AFDA. But didn't need, you know, but that was the highest that, that they needed to get their credit. I can talk to him and provide more, especially at the center board or via email about. What we think, how we think it would really impact our, how we could really connect it to the workforce. But at K-Tech, all of our classes, you know, we were, all of them have a workplace readiness integrated and it's a focus. Across our school all the time, but I'm happy to provide a course description and give you more information.
My next question based off of that, was there any exploration in terms of dual enrollment, technical math at PVCC?
I have not explored that, but I certainly can.
You just mentioned the center board and I'm kind of just figuring out like, uh, I guess to make sure everyone understands that I'm a part of the center board as well of. Does this, when does this come before us? And is this still proposal? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is the order of operations to a certain degree of course recommendations to individual boards. Charlottesville and Albemarle versus course recommendations to K-Tech Center Board as well.
Program of study will go before the center board in January at the January meeting and for approval in the February meeting. Um, and ultimately, the, ultimately recommendations are approved by the center board. So. I'm here tonight so that the entire Charlottesville City School Board knows the recommendation, but, um, but the center board ultimately approves. Is that your question, Mr. Morse?
That, that provides information. Yes. When? When? Lastly, lastly, for EMT and Vet Science, um, I think you mentioned that it's going to be strictly DE, which also means that those students have to. Meet those requirements. Can you just give a little bit of information so everyone understands what you mean by that?
Absolutely. So our students that do dual enrollment at K-Tech, um, in our trade classes, not our academic classes, they have to have a minimum GPA of a 2.0. And that's really right now without the placement test, that's really the, that's really the baseline requirement. Um, and so, uh, it feels like still very accessible to me, um, for us to make that a requirement. But we can't within, and function within our agreement with Piedmont to offer, to have students that cannot be dual enrolled and that are dual enrolled in the same class. And so EMT has a very strong pathway to, um, to the paramedic program at PVCC. And so, and a lot of our students do access that pathway. At Vet Science, our students leave with a certificate as a vet technician through Blue Ridge Community College. And so when we are evaluating the program of study, it made a lot of sense to us to say, to get to access these two classes, you do have to, you do have to have the minimum requirement to. Be a dual enrolled student. And so that was why we made that decision.
Thank you. Um, last thing about Vet Science, if I'm not mistaken, it was only one course of Vet Science. Is that right? Uh, one class, I should say.
Right. We, we only teach it in the morning. Right now. And I think enrollment last year, we had maybe requests for 21. We did, and we ended up being able to serve the one student. So everybody that wanted to got in.
And I guess my next question after that was, do we anticipate an expansion of that program now that it's dual enrollment or still kind of wait and see?
I think we'll wait and see after program requests are in, and that's kind of how we base, how we base. Expanding that program to, um, two sec, two sections instead of just one. And then also our instructor's willingness to teach the class the whole day. Right now she, she's been part-time for four years.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have right now.
Mr. Bryant? Ms. McKeever? Ms. Bird? Just curious, um. So as far as the dual enrollment for EMT and Vet Science, so do we feel like that will exclude a certain number of, of students? I mean, have you, have you looked at that?
We, uh, right now, all of our students that are in Vet Science, um, qualify for dual enrollment, every single one that currently is there. So I don't think that it, I don't think that it will be. As I said, the requirement is, is pretty minimal. EMT, we have talked about, um, it won't be for next year. It might be for the next year, adding an EMR course, uh, so that, so that students that maybe can't access EMT could take an EMR course. That wouldn't have the same requirement for dual enrollment. But right now, because of our current structure, um, we can't do that going into next year because of. EMT is split between K-Tech and Western Albemarle High School.
And then just out of curiosity for the, um, dual enrollment, English and the algebra three. Have you, do you have a sense of? Who those courses might serve when you're looking at the different schools that attend K-Tech or participate in K-Tech?
Do you mean which schools will have the most participation from?
I mean, do you, do you have a sense right now if Charlottesville students are wanting or needing those, or is it more? Say the Monticello students who have further to go? I mean, I'm just curious.
I, in all honesty, do not know the answer to that question. Um, our academic courses are well attended, uh, from every single one of our base schools. We have lots of CHS kids as well from, and also. Students from Albemarle that access our academic classes. Um, one of the reasons we are really looking at adding both of these are just so that more students can come to K-Tech and have freedom within their schedule. To, to access their trade while doing an academic course. I'm happy to look at that and could present that at the center board meeting in January, if you wanted to look at. Which students from which schools access our academic classes.
That would be great. That's all my questions. Mr. Morse, did you have another question?
Did. I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Torres, you, you, you jogged my, my thoughts. You asked about the exclusion, um, and Ms. Carter, you reference, um, students that currently take Vet Science. I'm kind of interested in exclusion based on like the waiting list, not people that are already in Vet Science, but who may have expressed interest previously.
So for Vet Science, we have always been able to serve everybody that has been on the waiting list. That's not the case for all of our courses?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me clarify a little bit, uh, in, in respect to dual enrollment. I guess EMT as well. Students that are currently on the waiting list or have expressed. I guess EMT as well, students that are currently on the waiting list or have expressed interest. Do you happen to have a rough estimate of who might be excluded from that curtain, that new offering or the recommended offering?
I don't know a number for sure, but I do, but like, as I mentioned, both Vet Science and EMT, any Vet Science or EMT stu, all Vet Science students right now are dual enrolled, every single one. So any student that registered for it this year just inherently qualified for dual enrollment. EMT, we do have a mixed, we currently do have a mixed class. I could look to see which students are not dual enrolled and let you know what that, what that percentage. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Could you also, for the center board meeting, if you, if, I'm sure the data is there somewhere in terms of the waiting list and who could not attend Vet Science because it's already a DE course?
It, there, I, I do know that, I do know that number off the top of my, every, this year, we only had 21 requests for Vet Science. We were able to, and so within the beginning of the year, we ended up getting the one student that was on the waiting list into the class because another student opted out for whatever reason. And every single one of those students qualified for dual enrollment and that was just inherent. Am I answering? I'm not sure I'm answering the question correctly or understand.
Yes, I understood. Thank you.
And the same for EMT, we did not have, we were able to serve, the class is full, but there were no students left at the, after the 10-day enrollment period left on a waiting list. Our classes, which I'm, I think you're aware of, but electricity and our, our carbon, our construction trades and our automotive programs had substantial waiting lists that never, of students we did not serve this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a nice robust discussion about the program of studies recommendations. I understand we're gonna continue our conversation about AP Physics and AP Prec calculus. Typically, we come back to you all in January for you to approve our program of studies. So we will plan to continue with that process and bring you where we land with those issues, if that's okay with you all. Okay.
And Dr. Odie can remain there because we, she will present this, the calendar for 2324.
Okay. So next up, tonight, I will share some information about our calendar update with you all regarding our preparations for the 2324 draft school calendar. Our Sum and Substance is here before you. We will talk about the planning process. I'll share our survey data. We will make a calendar recommendation tonight and then we'll discuss our next steps. Next slide, please. Now, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about our planning process this year. We wanted to make sure that we had a diverse committee that consisted of teachers and parents as well as administrators. So we did establish a committee of 18 members. This was a much larger committee than we've had in previous years. So we were very pleased with our large group of folks that agreed to support this process. I had already met with a representative from Albemarle County a couple of times to talk through the calendar process. And then we brought our committees together on November 10th to discuss the drafts that we had prepared. The Charlottesville Committee was pleased with our draft number 1A, although it looked as if Albemarle was going to go in a different way. We did send out draft number 1A with a survey on November 16th for feedback. The survey was opened until the 21st of November and we needed to close it because that's when we were bringing our committee back together to, and so we wanted to compile the data and, and be able to share that information with our committee. Next slide, please. So here you see that draft calendar that we did send out for feedback with the survey questions. It is draft number 1A. As you can see, this one has an early start and an early end to the school year with a start date of August 16th for students and the end date being May 31st. It includes a five-day Thanksgiving break. In talking with the committee, some of the things that they had liked and about this calendar were that it offered more unbroken, continuous weeks of learning. It minimized the weeks where there was, where new learning material would not be likely introduced or presented. We also talked about the, our teachers' mental wellness and how the longer break at Thanksgiving and the early close to the school year would be beneficial there. So those were some of the reasons for draft number 1A. Next slide, please. When we shared that calendar out, we included a five-question survey to be completed by the participants. We had over 1,200 people respond to our survey, which is quite a bit more than we have had in recent years, quite a bit more. You will see the five questions there that were asked. And in a few moments on the next slides, I'll break down how some of those questions were answered. Next slide, please. The first question was, setting aside whether this calendar matches the Albemarle calendar or county public schools' calendar, do you like this calendar? A rating of 1 meant, "I like it," while a rating of 5 meant, "I don't like it." Here you will see that 34.2% chose a rating of 1 and 17.2% chose a rating of 2. So 51.4% of the respondents liked draft number 1A. That's a majority, but not an overwhelming majority. Note that 20.5% said they don't like the calendar, which is a rating of 5, and 10.8% rated that a 4. So when you add those two together, that's 31.3% that said they don't really like the calendar. And then you'll see that several respondents were right there in the middle. We call those the neutral folks. That was about 17.2% that we guess could go either way with the calendar. Next slide, please. We asked this next question, "In the event that we landed on a different calendar than Albemarle, how important is it for the Charlottesville school calendar to match the Albemarle County Public Schools' calendar?" Here, a rating of 1 means it's very important that the calendars match, while a rating of 5 means it's not important at all. As you can see, this seems to not be a high interest. There doesn't seem to be a high interest in staying aligned with Albemarle. 36.1% chose a 5 rating and 12.9% chose a 4 rating. So 49% of our respondents do not think it is important to align with Albemarle. Only 27% chose a 1 or a 2 rating, indicating that they would like to remain aligned with Albemarle. And 23%, 23.5% were right there in the middle, those neutral respondents who could go either way. The next question, uh, next slide, please. The next question here, this calendar starts on August 16th and ends on May 31st. Would you rather have a start a week later and end in June? We just wanted to be sure that we had the answers that people really wanted us to have, which brought some interesting results. Here we see a definite split with regard to the start day. Here, 45.9% show the early start date of August 16th, while 43.2% chose the later start date of August 23rd. 10.8% want us to do whatever aligns with Albemarle. So as, as I said, we definitely see a split decision here. And the community is divided, which is not what we had intended at all. Next slide, please. And here you will see who participated in our survey. We had 43%, uh, 0.3% were parents, 32.9% were staff, 20.8% were students. We did ask for student voice in our calendar survey. And a small portion were community members that green sliver. And we also received comments from most of our over 1,200 respondents. There were various responses regarding the start date, regarding the Thanksgiving holiday and the end date. Some of the trends that we saw regarding these concerns were the heat in early August. Some people didn't want to send their children back to school in early August because it's still summer and too hot. There were concerns with childcare, thinking that the Thanksgiving break would, you know, adding those two extra days added a, um, an issue, a challenge with some parents with childcare. Some said that they wanted to be aligned with UVA. And, and then some said that combining the long Thanksgiving break and the winter break was just too much time off right there together. And then we heard the inverse. There were people who really loved all of those things. So it, it really was a divide and we just certainly did not intend to do that. Next, and leave it here on this slide. So we've learned quite a bit from our survey data. We were very pleased to have the voices from various stakeholders. As I mentioned, over 1,200 respondents, which is really huge for us. We see that there is, there is an interest. There is a definite interest in moving in a new direction with the calendar. A calendar such as draft number 1A, there is some interest there, just maybe not at this point, maybe at some point. We learned that maybe there's more advanced notice that is needed to move into a direction such as this with an earlier start date. So maybe it's something we could consider for the following year if we start that work now. So, so we may need to slow down a bit and get some more data before moving forward with a calendar such as draft number 1A. So next slide, please. So because of that need that we see to slow down and do more community outreach, we are recommending a more traditional calendar for the 2324 school year, one similar to what we are currently under this year. So here you see draft number 1C. This calendar has the traditional start date and end dates with the start of August 23rd and an end of June 7th, very similar to what we have used in the last few years. It has a three-day Thanksgiving break as we have been accustomed to. We did move that October Professional Learning Day that caused some, some challenges or angst last year. We moved that to February, to February 9th due to those concerns. With the end of October, we had several end of October days out and then combined with the early November days, those were some current concerns that were raised last year. This calendar that you see before you, draft number 1C, is 177 days, but we do meet the 990 hours. The state requires 180 days or 990 hours. We are beyond the 990 hours as we are this year. This year's calendar that we're currently under is 176 days. We're at approximately 1,026 hours. So, next slide, please. As for our next steps, we hope to seek feedback about this new calendar draft, number 1C, that I'm recommending to you tonight and then move forward with your approval at the January School Board meeting. I want to continue that work with our wonderful calendar committee. They've been so amazing in doing this important work and providing great ideas and suggestions and just thoughtful, thoughtful feedback. So I want to continue that work with them as we consider what another calendar might look like for 24, 25 and beyond. I want to meet periodically with them over the next several months to possibly draft a 24, 25 calendar or get feedback. We want to get some more community outreach, hear from our families, our community and talk to childcare. We, we have great partnerships with the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, Parks and Rec. We would work really closely with all of them and some others that watch our children each day. So I want to just make sure that if we do move in a direction where we start earlier and earlier, where our calendars might not align with Albemarle, if they're still gonna be able to support our families' needs, we may consider, if the board so chooses, we may send out a new survey to get more information about what this could look like for our division. But I think that it's gonna be important to really balance out our families' needs with our staff's mental wellness needs. You know, some of the, the reasons that we put these extra days for, in the calendar were to support our staff's mental wellness. But we do also want to balance that out with family needs and childcare. So we just want to get some more feedback and give more time for parents and families and community to be able to, to be able to digest a possible change for possibly 24, 25. So, um, next slide, please. Well, we do want to return to the board. That last bullet on that last slide was just to be able to come back to the board in April with some information about what we've worked on with the calendar committee over these next few months, where we landed with a possible 24, 25 and beyond, where that could look for us. And just come back to you all in April with what that could be like. And then see what our next steps are beyond that. So here again, you see our Sum and Substance. I think I've covered all of that this evening. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Allison, do you, do you have any questions?
No questions, but in preparation, can you hear me all right? Okay, um, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I did a bit of an informal survey of my classmates and teachers. And people generally were not feeling strongly about having a longer Thanksgiving break and in fact, would rather have those days, the extra days off in February and March. Those are very difficult months. The, for instance, the end of the quarter is the end of March. Those are very difficult months where there's only one or two days off. And people much preferred having days off in the, those early spring months rather than the, the extra long Thanksgiving break. But regarding which week we start, it was pretty much a 50/50 split. No strong, no strong feelings there.
Thank you so much for reaching out to your peers.
Um, so thank you so much for this process. I just think it was so good to get the, so great, a lot of surveys. And I, I think the, you're right to kind of just pause and like maybe slow down a little bit to really feel out what the community wants. Because obviously, starting earlier, especially this summer, would be a problem. But if we kind of lay the groundwork for next summer. But if we kind of lay the groundwork for next summer, that likely would be received a lot better. Because people already have their reservations for this summer.
That's what we heard, loud and clear.
Yeah. The only thing that I thought might be interesting, because you know, I always have something, I'm sorry, is the twenty-ninth of September is a workday, which is a professional learning day with no students. And I just, and maybe this is just wrong. But the twenty-fifth is Yom Kippur, which I just wondered if they're all sunset, anyway. We could switch that. Obviously, those who are, would be working, like that would be a problem. But I just wondered if that was thought about.
So, if I may, Ms. McHeever. On our Calendar Committee, we did have a representative from the Jewish community. And this representative very clearly requested that we move the Staff Development Day from that Jewish holiday because they had to choose between their own professional learning or worshiping, you know, on a holy day. And so, because we, so we made that choice to move it off of the Jewish holiday because staff can opt to take that day off as a Jewish absent, you know, as a religious holiday. But they still would be able to do their professional learning on that Monday, which we would have there. So we absolutely, we've received feedback over the last couple of years because we had the Professional Learning Day on the Jewish holiday. And so, this came up very clearly in our Calendar Committee meeting to move it. And that's why we did that.
Right. Doesn't really account for the students that would, you know, so, you know, so I hear you. And I think that's, you know, if that's, who am I to, I do think that there are other, we got to just keep asking the question. So I appreciate you guys talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all the hard work you all done on the calendar. When I first saw the one A, I said, wow, five days for Thanksgiving. That's, I mean, I never had that before. But anyway, I think it's wise to move slowly to get more feedback from the community before we transition to that model. And also in aligning with the county. So I guess the conversation will still continue yearly with both entities to work on a calendar that's amenable to both.
It is absolutely our hope to continue to collaborate with Albemarle County. They've released their survey this week. And so we see a few changes, a few differences in, from our draft one C and their draft. But there are, spring break is the same, winter break is the same. One of their drafts has the Thanksgiving three days, the same as ours. There might be a few differences here and there. And I think that that's been the case over the past few years. A Staff Development Day there, might not be a Staff Development Day here. But it would absolutely, we would, we would hope that we could continue to collaborate with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again. As my colleagues have said, in terms of taking it slow, I think that's a fair approach. I will say, just in terms of one A, I was a little excited. Not specifically about the break itself, but excited about the three weeks in between Thanksgiving and then the winter break. There is Harvey Mudd College in California. They have a well-known clinic program. And I was like, ooh, what if we could do a clinic program here at Charlesville City Schools, specifically in terms of increasing work-based learning? So I saw that as an opportunity to say, we're going to take a break. We're going to do something a little bit different, collaborative. I'm not advocating, not advocating for IB program, but even in IB program, specifically amongst the scientists in Group Four, they require different subject areas. So if you have environmental sciences, engineering, and some of the other sciences, I think biology is in there, they work together. So I saw that as an opportunity to kind of change what we're doing, but also meet the need in terms of work-based learning, work-based experiences. And I know that's more secondary for middle school, high school. And then we have to kind of figure out what that means for elementary. But I just saw that as an opportunity for the three weeks in between the Thanksgiving break for one A and winter break. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft.
Yeah. Thank you for all the work, you and the committee, on this. And thank you for considering the Jewish High Holidays in your process. I really do appreciate that. And, gosh, yeah, I was just thinking that along the lines of what Mr. Morris is saying, there's some of the private high schools do a sort of a mini-session where the students are actually out in the community doing project-based learning. And, you know, as we go forward, there may be, you know, some nice opportunities to use certain blocks of time in some innovative ways, like Tandem and some of the other schools do. But I guess we're going forward with one C, which is more aligned with Albemarle County, although not a hundred percent, which I think is fine. And it sounds like that's what we're doing, that's where we're headed for this next year.
That's the recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Dooly?
I'm, I am really disappointed that one A is not moving forward at this time. But I hope we continue to push in that direction, moving forward. And even further than one A, I really would love to see the semester end at the winter holiday. These gaps of time between significant numbers of days off just are nonsensical to me. I'm really concerned about the quality of instruction and what is going to happen, you know, in those nine or eight days following Memorial Day and the end of school. I just really liked that one A, you know, is more closely aligned with the SOL calendar. And it just makes, it's more logical, it makes sense. And I think all of our community partners will adjust their businesses. They're going to adjust to when they are going to have students enrolled. So keep pushing on that. Moving forward, I would love to know the number of teacher days. And I could count, I could do this myself. But I know we're counting teacher or student contact hours. But just what is, what's the total number of teacher work days? And by work, I mean student contact and work days and professional development days in the calendar.
Okay.
Any other comments? No, I appreciate the work that you've done. I guess my only feedback, and you did it tonight, was to just make sure as you move through this process and continue the work, that I think some of the feedback I got was just people not understanding the whys. To, you know, and so I think to just clearly make sure that, you know, parents and staff and whoever understand why we, you know, want to consider a change like this, I think will be helpful in potentially getting to something different. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right. Last, but certainly not least, we have the Special Education Update from Dr. Bracy Antin.
Good evening. I see they saved the best for last. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, and members of the school board. We will be presenting the Special Education Overview. I'll start with introducing our team that we have here with us. We have Dr. Patty Leslie, who's the Special Education Coordinator for private placement. We have Rachel Rasnick, who's the Special Education Coordinator of Elementary and Early Childhood Education. So tonight, we will be, or this evening, we will be talking about, the agenda this evening will be continuum of Special Education Services, Related Services, Staffing, Disability Category Rates, Disability Categories Per School, as well as Students With Disabilities Served Outside Of CCS, Special Education Department Goals, Federal Indicator Report, Initiatives, and any questions at closing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rasnick.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. One more. So, our continuum of Special Education Services. So IEP teams, which are made up of general education teachers, special education teachers, parents, and students, when appropriate, and our administrators, all of our administrators are LEAs, designees, review the needs and educationally relevant data to decide what services students need. Consideration is always given to the least restrictive environment to offer those services in. And this does not depend on a student's age, grade, special education designation. It really is based on what is the most appropriate setting for a student to get their needs met on a daily basis. We offer in Charlesville City Schools a comprehensive continuum of Special Education Services. Students, we're going to go from least restrictive to most restrictive. And that's how our IEP team is considered as well. So when we think about our indirect services, those are the services that help us monitor student progress and implement the IEP effectively. So implementing training and supports for teachers to provide accommodations, you know, use the tools provided in the IEP appropriately. And then we have students receive services within the general education setting. Those are mostly curriculum-based. They are supporting students with reaching their curriculum grade-level goals. It helps students generalize skills that they might have learned in other settings or with related service providers. And for the most part, students are working towards a general curriculum, general curriculum standards. An IEP team may also consider services in the special education setting. And those are really services focused on foundational skills and the skills that students need to more effectively access their grade or course curriculum, their social expectations or behavioral expectations, and meet their individual IEP goals. And what's important is that students are only removed from their general education setting to access a special education setting when it is absolutely necessary for them to meet their individual goals. The majority of our students receive a combination of indirect services and combined with general education and special education services. And so as we get into our more restrictive setting, we're thinking about fewer students and with more significant needs and disabilities. Beyond our kind of resource-level support, students, a small number of students receive services in our intensive special education programs. More restrictive doesn't necessarily mean less time in general education. It might mean that the modifications to general education are more significant. You might need a much smaller ratio. So there might be instructional assistance support in that general education setting for you to access it. Or there needs to be a high level of modification and structure added to that setting. And then finally, we have a few students who, due to their needs, access services outside of our Charlesville City Schools locations. And so those services attend, those students attend a public day setting, which provides Ivy Creek. Or we have a number of local and not-so-local, private-day schools that students attend. And then the most restrictive would be a residential placement. Next slide. So in addition to Special Education Services, we offer a variety of related services. Related services are intended for students to benefit from their special education program. They include a number of things that are provided by locally-employed staff and a number of things provided by our prep, regional program staff. And you can see what they are there. And if you have any questions about them, you can answer.
So I'm going to talk about who's serving our students and the personnel that we have employed now with this bed department. So we have sixty-three special ed teachers, fifty-two instructional assistants, one clinical and four school psychologists, ten speech pathologists, one occupational therapist, one certified occupational therapist assistant, two assistive technology specialists, one vision orientation and mobility braille specialist, one hearing and impaired specialist, and one physical therapist. So this, this next table talks about or charts students with disabilities by primary disability category over the last eight years. If you notice, it dates back to twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen to current. So I would like for you to draw your eyes to the bottom line, the total line, where you see that the SPED identification is on a decline over the past years. And just keep in mind, the SPED population should be twelve percent of the school division's student body population. And we're currently at thirteen percent. So we're moving in target in that area. So this table can also be used along with other pieces of data to analyze such things as disproportionate for disabilities. We look at this data along with other indicator daters for state and federal reporting to ensure we're in line with being non-disproportionate with disabilities. This also can be looked at, to look at, to determine the types of services and supports we may need to provide students according to their disabilities that they currently have.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
It seems like the biggest decrease is in the category of specific learning disability. I know you are new to our division, but would you, were we over-identifying? Like what is, where are we getting the decrease?
They've met the requirements for the, for indicator ten. But it also looks at race and gender and determine if those students are receiving ten times more than any other student. So there could be the divide with the race and gender, even though that's the collective number. That's one-twenty. So everything was on the indicators to met. So it was not disproportionate.
Okay, great question.
You can do the next slide. So this table charts students with disabilities by school. So with this one, we use this data, it also can be used to analyze along with other pieces of data, such as the percentage services determined as for staffing needs. When you look at this table, and the types and levels of support that students may need. And also transition services, when you're looking at the numbers for CHS as well as Buford, when you're looking at those total numbers.
So we know one of the critical issues that we've been looking at as a division is how many of our students are served outside of our division. And so ever since I've arrived in the, in the division, one of my specialty areas was I've worked at a program that serves students outside of the division. So when I came in, that was kind of one of my focuses. We've worked very hard to figure out how we can, one, keep students in the division, but two, return them. You're seeing a comparison just of last year to this year. That reflects a twenty percent decrease in our population of students out. But I did want to point out that since twenty eighteen to now, we've had a thirty-five percent decrease in the number of our students out. So we're pretty proud of that. It's taken a lot of work to, one, build the capacity to keep our students here and make sure that they're staying with us, but also to make sure that our staff feels comfortable bringing them back. So we're very proud that we're able to take care of our students here. The number you're seeing right now, I also wanted to point out that we have two students that will be fully back with us in January. So we wanted to reflect the numbers appropriately as of January. Another question that does come up, it's not on the slide, but one thing that has come up is a question about the quality of education our students are getting while they're outside the division. Keep in mind that when our students leave, we're looking for the therapeutic quality of their placements. So we're looking for the goals of how to develop those coping skills to get them back. We do realize that some We do realize that sometimes there's some concern about, what's the instruction they're getting? Just to give you a point of reference, we did have four of our students who exited education because of age or graduation. Of the four, the three that graduated, all graduated with standard diplomas. One of those exited ready to sit for her CNA test. One of those exited already employed. And then of the one who did not exit with a standard diploma, she had exited CHS with her applied studies. But while she was getting her, it was more disability-related services, but while she was in that placement, she did an independent art display in that school. So they all had very unique opportunities. The other thing I wanted to point out is within those 48 students, we're proud of the fact that we don't have any students in residential right now. Often, it's not us placing in residential. It is outside placements, and we do support that, but we do have students who have reached a point where they do not need to be in residential. Two of our students are transitioning into KTEC, or they're taking advantage of KTEC programs. So they're spending part of their time in a general education setting, even though they're still in a separate school. Three of our students are spending some time at CHS. They're not transitioning full-time, but they are in our program, taking advantage of some of our classes. And we do have eight who are currently being monitored for readiness. They're nearing readiness, so our numbers will continue to decrease.
So last year, we presented some goals to the school board, and we wanted to reflect on the progress we'd made towards those goals and show that, show what we're continuing to focus on. So one of our continuous goals is to provide a supportive, inclusive opportunity for all students with disabilities in Charlottesville City Public Schools. Our work with increasing teacher-to-capacity has significantly reduced our need for services in the special education setting, but also in private days. And we're really proud of that work, and that's from early childhood through high school. We are continuing to focus on providing support for parents of students with disabilities. We work with a number of partners to do that. Our partners on the Instructional Hall, ESL, SCL, and Equity, those are essential lifelines for us, our student and family engagement team. But we also work with community agencies and the Piedmont Regional Education Program and their Parent Resource Center. And then we had an instructional goal last year that we presented to you. And we're really proud of our students. They exceeded what we had set as our goal in math. And we want to continue to strive for success for our students with disabilities. And so we have set a new goal of reaching that state average for pass rates on those, and of course, and grade-level SOLs. So then, long-term, we continue to want to build capacity of our staff to support the needs of students who require intensive social, emotional, and behavioral instruction and intervention. We are significantly reducing the number of referrals to private day schools and the elementary schools. And so we're hoping that that trend continues as kids get older. And then we also want to make sure that our school leadership is expressing their opinions about inclusion, and we're responding with what schools need on an individual school basis and at a division level to increase the success of students with disabilities in inclusive settings.
The slide you're seeing right now is reflecting some of our indicator data. And again, we're pretty proud of what we were able to gather. We do send out a yearly parent survey. It is a requirement, but we're quite interested in getting that information back. The bar that you're seeing there is reflecting the feedback we got from parents about how they felt about their involvement in IEP meetings. And 90% of our parents are feeling like they're being contacted and they're having active involvement in their student's cases. We were very proud of that percentage coming back. For indicator 11, that's reflecting that when we have a student referred for initial eligibility, we are required to stick to a timeline. And if we do not have the ability to stay to the timeline, it's very strict as to how we are able to go outside the timeline. We were 100% compliant with that. With our secondary goals and transition services, we do a, again, we're looking at indicator 13. And for that one, all of the selected IEPs for the students, we randomly select a percentage of those IEPs. And again, all of the IEPs that we looked at were 100% compliant for that particular transition area. And then for post-secondary outcomes, when we looked at them, out of the 42 of 2021 graduates, 85% responded and participated in that. And there was a significant increase in the participation of those students who had participated, first of all. But it was also, we got some really nice feedback from students. They were able to give us some nice comments that we passed on to teachers to give them feedback. One, just to give them a rewarding outcome for all their hard work and some feedback a year later from students, but then also some growth comments from our students, which is always good.
Okay, these are some current initiatives that we are currently working with now. It's in order to maintain our indicator as well as in order to reach our goals. Now, currently, we have implementation of research-based reading interventions, professional learning opportunities assigned with various components of SPED, MAT, relational certification training for those teachers that are in those extensive behavior programs, disability awareness fall festival that we had to get resources out to parents, community resources for them to connect with. And SPED upcoming, we have a SPED spring fling that we're trying to organize. It's going to be a resource job fair, so stay tuned for that. For students that are eighth grade and up, we're trying to continue to promote that indicator 14 for after-high school graduation and connecting our students with business partners for employment. And PREP events, we work with the Parent Resource Center. We have Fitness Night, executive functioning classes, and Transition Fair that is also coming up. And volunteer opportunities for students and parents, and of course, parent surveys. And another initiative also that's not listed is working with our building administrators and going through the schools and working with them to help streamline their special ed department within each building. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, appreciate that. Any questions down here to my left?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that this was a great presentation. I don't remember it being, I just felt it was very informative. So thank you and welcome to Charlottesville.
Thank you.
My only...
Great team.
I'm sorry.
I was going to have a great team.
Just as a follow-up, because, excuse my lack of knowledge, but if we could hear more about the, like, the job fairs and the after, the success after graduation and what that looks like and hearing more of like what's available to students.
Of course. We had the first fall festival here for Charlottesville. Turned out really nice. We didn't have, we had small parent participation, but word of mouth, we're going to try to boost that for the spring, for the job fair. So we're going to go out and connect with business partners. I've been to Walmart, Sam's Club. They're willing to hire students on the spot. We're trying to do it in the spring, so that way they'll have summer jobs and things of that nature, maybe have some college representatives come. And just trying to cross my fingers, DMV, to help students get IDs and things of that nature, so they will be able to connect with communities and be able to get jobs and things like that. So that promotes after-high school graduation. It sets them up for success to be able, if not college-ready, career-ready, because not all our babies want to go to college. So it sets them up for that piece of success, for that indicator 14. So when we're calling home and they're saying, "Okay, I'm working here for a time," or "I'm doing this in the community," and they're being able to live and sustain a lifestyle for themselves.
Thank you.
That's why I'm excited about those CTE programs, but that's another thing. That's another conversation.
I don't have a question, but just thank you all for this great presentation. It's very uplifting and inspiring. You know, I had an opportunity to teach a walk for 22 years, and a lot of students came before me with special needs and benefited from the music program and had a wondrous time. So, and also as a counselor. So thank you so much for this great update. And it's just uplifting to hear the wondrous things you all are doing as a special ed department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, I also want to thank you. This department seems to be really gelling and working together in a really great way. And so I really appreciate that. And I just had a question, a couple of questions about, one, the, I'd like to hear a little bit about the private day settings that our students spend time in outside of CCS.
Is there something specific you'd like to know, or just the...
Just, no, I mean, just where do they go?
So, of course, we have our public separate school, which is Ivy Creek through PREP. And so we're very fortunate to have them and try to take advantage of slots. And I know Dr. Bracy has been partnering with them and trying to open up more opportunities, which we're excited about. And then we are fortunate to have two in the city. We have Keys Academy and we have Elk Hill. So that keeps them in the city. And of course, the goal is always to keep them as close to home as possible. And then there are various reasons that we would need to reach out beyond Charlottesville. So there's a wide variety of partners that we have worked with. We have had some partners over the years that have had to close for various reasons. I do have a chart, Dr. Bracy and I have worked to put it together, that we have a list of the various partners we've worked with. We'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
And then if you ever wanted information about a certain partner, I could definitely send you the links to those, if that would be helpful.
So these are all emotional behavioral support settings, right? The reasons for...
Many times, the reason the student is placed is because they have had some type of mental health need or social behavioral need, and they're needing to develop the coping skills in order to come back into the general education setting. Many times, people will refer to the small school setting, but it really goes quite beyond that. There is a therapeutic component to these partners that is above and beyond what we are able to provide in the moment. But we do try to be very strategic about the goals for why they're going.
And we're trying to increase our capacity for in-house intensive placement, but support services, sort of like the day treatment center in-house?
I don't know that we have reached the level of having day treatment, but we have definitely been much more strategic about what are the goals we're working on and which ones can we meet in-house. And so I think because we have been very pointed about the goals that we want to achieve with our students, that's allowed us to know which ones we can work on in-house rather than just having a general need. I think it's become far more streamlined so that we are working on very specific targeted goals. That's helped a lot.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Ms. Dooley?
On Slide six, the department teaching and related service staff, are those all in-house or any of those PREP positions?
They are, it's a combination.
And I don't need a breakdown, I was just curious if they were all lumped.
So on the left, they are Charlottesville City School staff, speech services for the hearing impaired, we're contracting. Psychological services is with our school psychologists, and then nursing are in-house.
Sorry, I think I was on the next slide, but I see now that differentiation makes sense.
Okay. And on that, so on that slide, special education teachers and instructional assistants, and the four school psychologists are local, our speech pathologists are local, our certified occupational therapy assistant is local, and then everything else is through PREP.
And so I have the privilege of serving on PREP. And so I think as we're heading into next budget allocation cycle, I guess, working with Ms. Hoover and Ms. Powell, as you guys are reviewing IEPs and needed services and number of students and hours and everything that goes into that, any services that might transition from PREP into, like, where those dollars can be reallocated from PREP to the division? I think that would be helpful. You guys are all nodding as if you've had this conversation without me, but yes.
Can we add a little something about what we're doing in-house to support the private day students? Mainly because our teachers are working exceptionally hard. And one of the things that we noticed was we needed a really common language around responding to students in crisis. And we're really appreciative of the investment that's been made in the special education department to be trained as MAT instructors. And so almost our entire department has gone through the relational training, which is conflict resolution, crisis management, and just like listening skills, lots of things like that. And then the people who need the technical training have completed that as well. But that was a big investment in getting us trained as instructors, and so that money has been very well spent. And our feedback on the sessions has been good, and people are using those skills, receiving those skills, being used. And so we're very grateful for that opportunity.
Now, we'll go a step further with those specialty programs. It also serves as a buffer. I think the reason the numbers are coming down because they transition to those programs before going to the other programs outside of the division. And they also transition, while they're in those programs, they're transitioning back into their general ed setting. So it's a buffer before they get to that level. And sometimes they've transitioned back before they have to be serviced outside. So they're really serving to work the programs. But I have one more comment about CAC.
Okay, thank you. A couple of times tonight, I felt like things have come up, like, we need updates and work sessions on PREP, because I know a lot of things are going on, and I know we've touched on it a little bit, but maybe Ms. Dooley can update us at some point, or we talk about it as those changes continue to roll out. I had a question. I believe Dr. Leslie mentioned the students attending KTEC. And we've talked, I know, on the center board a little bit about the number of students there that have IEPs and some of the barriers for scheduling there that we don't, or I was told we didn't have a counselor that represents those students. So really, services or interactions with those students, if they have IEPs there, is an issue or a concern? I think there have been some struggles. We had one student who, I think, it was more choice. It was not a good fit for that student, so they did not stay. There was, there has been a student there who academically, we were fortunate to have a private partner who was able to support her through the struggle. And she has made it to the second year of her program. But I think had we not had that partner, it may have been a bit more difficult without having the level of special education supports. And it was beyond the social, emotional needs. There were also some learning needs. And then I also have the level of a student being there, and they just took to it and have done very well. And I think that speaks to the variety of students that are in my situation. But I know we have had that conversation, the high school staff and I have had that conversation, is what does that mean for special education students? And how do we make them more successful at KTEC? I think it's an ongoing conversation. And it's a problem-solving, at the problem-solving stage right now. I don't know that we have answers or suggestions right now, but it is definitely a question that we would like to continue talking about, because we'd like to take advantage of services like that for them. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of opportunity there for these students. But I guess what I had heard in the KTEC setting in this conversation was because they're Charlottesville students and there's no one on-site there who can really look or... look or interact with their IEP and ensure that they're getting the accommodations that they need there, because we've got the Alamo on the Charlottesville divisions, that, that, that was an issue, you know, that these students couldn't be assisted there because nobody legally could look at their IEPs and help. So just, I just want to get that on your radar more than anything. And I think the reassurance I would give you is it's on our radar. We really appreciate you being aware of it and, and being ready to assist. We really want to continue that conversation, and we would want to have that conversation with K-Tech as well, because I think we realize, especially this year, maybe we don't realize what their questions and their needs are, so it's going to be very much a team effort. But thank you, that's a great, that's a great point and an ongoing need. Yeah, well, please let us know how we can better support, you know, you all and our students there. Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah. And I think that's it for me right now. Thank you so much for your presentation and updates.
I just want to say, tomorrow I'll be at the Autism Summit with a CAC table representing Charlottesville City, so if you have any parents who wants to come out and try to join our CAC, I'll be there with applications on hand, so come visit me. And thank you, oh, and I forgot, we have one more coordinator who had to leave, Lauren Diggs, so wanted to make sure she's included also. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda here is board response to written reports, which is available for viewing, and then our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. So if there's anybody online and/or in the media center here who would like to make public comment, now is your opportunity. All right, I believe we have somebody online.
Yes, we do. David Koenig, and she should be able to unmute at this time, David. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, school board members. I'm David Koenig, history teacher at Luba McGuinness Academy and parent of two Greenbrier Reading Stars. Sorry I couldn't stay and give my comment in person, had to get home to make dinner for the aforementioned Greenbrier students, but I was moved to speak tonight when I heard your statement about the, the proposed history standards. I just want to thank everyone on the school board for your strong and entirely appropriate statement about those standards. As a history teacher, I found both the content of the standards from the Yonkin administration and the process by which they were put together entirely offensive, and so thank you for, for your statement. I also had a thought that before you submit that statement to the State Department of Ed, that you may consider asking the social studies faculty in the school district if we would like to sign on to it. I imagine that you would probably get near unanimous support if you, if you did make that ask. At least I, I hope that you would. So that's why I wanted to speak, and then I see I have a little time left, and as long as I'm speaking, I may also, might as well also say, secondly, just express my support for the statement that was made by my union president earlier, and just urge this board once again to pass a collective bargaining resolution, one that respects the collective bargaining rights of our hard-working school secretaries, along with the rest of the professional and support staff in the school district, and a resolution that provides a pathway towards full recognition of our collective bargaining rights at some point in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else there online? One last calling for the media center. Okay. Thank you, and we will move to comments from the board, and I will mix it up a little bit, and I will start with Mr. Morse.
No comment.
Well, I do want to say I did, I have appreciated all your comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Well, I, I do think this is Allison's last month, right? I got it wrong last month, but I, I would like to express my appreciation, and I'm sure that of others, you've been just an amazing representative on our board, and you've, you've added so much and helped us in our process of, you know, thinking about things, learning, learning more about especially what the students are dealing with and what they're, what they care about, and, you know, just, wow, I mean, you've just been incredible, and I will really miss you, so you better teach the next person what, what to do. But thank you so much, Allison.
Ms. Dooley? I appreciated your comments as well, thank you. Mr. Bryant?
It's going to be brief. I just want to thank all the board members for this robust conversation tonight, all the topics we covered. And Allison, I certainly am going to miss you, and you have been an outstanding student school board member. I certainly appreciated all your input and insight, you're the eyes and ears of the school, so you have that perspective, and you have genuinely shared all of those, all of that feedback from the students. And good luck for the remainder of the school year, and I know you'll do well in all your classes, and thank you for your service.
Ms. Morse-Bird?
I just wanted to say thank you as well, and best of luck with all your future endeavors. I know you'll do great things.
Ms. McKeever?
I also expect to see you next year. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, thank you staff for everything. I just want to kind of go, we've got two more weeks, and then we're on holiday break, so the year is slipping away very quickly. Just want to express my gratitude and wish everybody peace and health as we move through the rest of this calendar year and into our next year, and, and thank you for everything, and we will move on to our superintendent's comments.
All right. I just want, I learned this evening as I was coming up that one of our former school board reps, I think he may be a school board rep again, Jay Sean Johnson, received, he's an Allen Scholarship winner, and so I want to congratulate him on that. The Chris Long Foundation, I did want to say thank you, we had the Ed Zodi event yesterday at Venable, and it's just, our students are so thoughtful and just how they represented us on yesterday, very appreciative of them. Ms. Bird, you have been a gem. I echo, I hope that you do return. I believe that what you've taught us is that we learn a lot from students and that your voice matters, and so I appreciate you, so thank you. And I'll, I'll still see you around. And then lastly, I just want to say that every day is CCS Employee Appreciation Day, that I appreciate each and every person who works for Charlottesville City Schools. You just don't appreciate what people do until they're not there to do it, and so I just am so thankful for each and every person who is a member of our Charlottesville Schools family, and that's it.
Thank you, we appreciate you too. I didn't mean to neglect Allison, wishing you well and expressing my gratitude. I expect to hear from you. We'd love to get updates ongoing, so thank you for all that you've offered, and next we'll have our work session wrap up.
Hopefully, I captured everything tonight. So the school naming committee to get community input about the choices for Clark, Algebra III course description, number of K-Tech students taking academic courses, the number of teacher instructional and workdays, and then for special education, after school, or excuse me, after high school success of our special education students. Did I miss anything?
We know where to find you if we think of something. I know. I'm like, she's not going to bring up the naming committee, is she, honestly? Thank you, appreciate that. Upcoming meetings, we have our next scheduled, regular scheduled board meeting on January fifth, and I believe that is all, so we will call this meeting adjourned.